Good evening. I'd like to call this August 29th a meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Dear God, you are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together today. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meetings so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals today. Amen.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Bellinger.
Here.
Dockett.
Here.
Zelenak.
Here.
Chockley.
Check.
Manley, here.
Otto.
Here.
Check.
Here.
Okay. We're all here. And we have some members of the public. Our attorney, our new township manager, Steve Ains, and our Chief of Police and, I mean, no, Public Safety Director, Bill Wagner. Okay, we have, yep, you're right. We have our Public Safety Director, Bill Wagner. Is there a problem?
I don't think we're on.
Are any of them on?
I can hear.
But it came through about here.
Only Wayne can hear us.
Okay. I'll try to, there we go. Okay. Uh, thank you. Okay, moving on. Can I have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Chick and support by?
I'll support.
Uh, Manley. Do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. We have three minutes. If anyone has anything they'd like to share with the board, please come up. Make sure the microphone's turned on. State your name and your address. And feel free to address us. Three minutes, try to keep it to three minutes. And welcome. This is not a question and answer time, so we'll just listen carefully to anyone who would like to come up to speak.
Mary Dablin, 9211 Brookside Drive. Last month, I defended Jim Nelson because I believed what some board members wanted to do was wrong. Something else that is wrong is the verbal swipes against some board members at many meetings, as well as on the website of Northfield Neighbors, and the continual whining about a township manager that needs to stop as well. We have a township manager that is well-qualified to work with all residents, and I would like to reiterate again, work with all residents, and he needs to be given the opportunity to do so. On the agenda is a request for funding for People's Express. Funding has been approved over the past two years, and I hope you will pass it again. The need for this service is not a want, but a necessity, not only for seniors, but others as well in the township that depend on it, plus it's less expensive than the alternative. And last, before I leave the podium, I want to say this. It's a shame that it takes a natural disaster to bring people together in this country. Please keep the people in Texas in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to come up to speak? Welcome.
Good evening. Brandt Johnson from Okemis, Michigan. I represent a client who has property in Northfield Township. He asked me to come speak with you all briefly to see about possibly getting the idea of medical marijuana facilities as an agenda item. Once, I would like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to talk, but as you all probably know, in 2016, the state legislators passed Public Act 281. Excuse me. And in 281, it allows for people in the state of Michigan to apply for a license to participate in medical marijuana businesses, and there are five different types of facilities. One is to, a provisioning center was the opportunity to distribute. The other is to grow. One is to process medical marijuana into non-smokable products, transportation and testing. And in Public Act 281, it gives the local municipalities the authority to either opt in and allow people to participate in your town, or do nothing, and if you do nothing, then people can't. So I'm here today to hopefully ask you all to consider looking at an ordinance to allow people to participate. I handed out packages which has a bulk of information regarding medical marijuana and Public Act 281. And a lot of times, people come here and they want to talk about the money that it could bring, Northfield Township. My main focus is the public and safety aspect. In Washtenaw County, there are close to 10,000 registered patients and caregivers. It ranks number six in the state of Michigan as the number of registered patients and caregivers per 1,000. That means that there are people in this community who are offering this product and using this product. And to give them an opportunity to come and apply for a license so you'll know who is who and who's doing what, as opposed to now. So I hope you all look over the information that I provided you all. There's some myths that I dispelled in there. There's some statistical information and some bullet points from Public Act 281. But hopefully, we can get this as an agenda item in Northfield Township, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, do we have anyone else who would like to come and speak with us at this time? No? Thank you very much for coming to speak with us. We are going to be dealing with priorities of the board in the near future as we set a retreat time, so we'll, if that gets onto our list of priorities, we may deal with that in the future. The next portion is board member comments. Do we have any board members who would like to speak to anything? Mr. Dockett?
Uh, yes. Last week, two weeks ago, we had a letter from a Dr. Amy Stole. I did not know who Dr. Amy Stole was, and she wrote a letter to the board of Northfield Township and to the citizens of Northfield Township. I thought the letter was right on. I asked for the letter to be read at the township meeting, August 15th. I was told it was too long and would take too much time. The supervisor said she would give me the phone number and the address of Amy so I could contact her, but the supervisor never gave me that information. So I guess Marilyn or any of my other board members did not know that Dr. Amy Stole was Dr. Barb Griffith's daughter. They could've told me that, so, oh, well. So much for transparency on the township board. That's my comments. Thank you.
Okay.
And I never did get the address.
Okay.
But I did find out who she was, and hopefully, they're going to put her letter in the current newspaper, so we'll see.
Ms. Otto?
Um, Mr. Dockett, just to let you know that we were provided by email her address and phone number.
Well, maybe you were, but I wasn't.
Okay. Well, I think what we would need to do is, is in the future, is just to have Jennifer make a copy of it and put it in your box for you.
What do you think? I've been getting emails ever since I've been on the board.
Okay.
But I did not get that email.
Ms. Belliger?
Um, I got something I'd like to say with regards to one item here. It was mentioned in public comments, so I'd like to comment now regarding People's Express. In 2010, the property taxes paid at the parcel where the People's Express Agency currently is located was approximately $6,100 a year. This revenue, which helps to fund and provide for police, schools, fire department, and the township, is no longer being collected on this parcel due to the fact that Status of People's Express is a nonprofit. For the past six or so years, the taxpayers of Northfield Township have subsidized or absorbed this lost tax revenue to cover for the fact that 10 Jennings no longer contributes to the township tax rolls. Therefore, I, instead of asking for more, I would like to see People's Express giving us something back. I would like to see People's Express giving discount services to our Northfield Township residents. At least $36,000 has been absorbed by the taxpayers of Northfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bell, Zelenak?
Yes, I have a few comments. One is, just a reminder that taxes are due September 14th. You still have time. Another is, went to the library events, the Eclipse. It was really awesome. Saw a lot of people there. Not only was the clip awesome, but the library event was. At that time, too, I ran into Cecilia Empante, one of our planning commissioners, and we talked about, you know, that I think the township and the board members and the town people, we all agree that we want development where it is, so we need to really look at our process to see how we can address that and help people that need some help getting through the process. So at our board retreat, that would be something really good to talk about, because I do believe we all want the same thing, it's just trying to get there. The next one is the zoning ordinance is another one, is about selling cars. I know we talked about that a little bit at our last board meeting, and I've heard a few people talk to me about it, and I talked to the township manager as well as the supervisor, and they had maybe indicated we need to look at that ordinance. Maybe it would be possible, a suggestion from the township supervisor is, if you own the car, you can have one car out there if you owned it, and maybe for a limited time. Again, I think it's something that we need to look at as well. The other thing is, again, at the board retreat, another one is communication. As I was walking our dogs on Six Mile, I got several stops about the culvert. Many people did not know that was happening. So again, how do we communicate to our residents to ensure they know what's happening and when they're impacted? So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I do want to mention that it is practice because Mr. Dockett does not receive, does not have a computer that he gets email on, that Ms. Carlyle does print off all of the emails that are sent to the whole board. So if that was not in your mailbox one day, Mr. Dockett, that was potentially just an oversight.
I guess it was an oversight that nobody on the board knew who Amy was. Nobody knows that she was Dr. Barb's daughter.
I do.
You said you would give me that. You didn't say who she was.
I didn't know.
Okay.
I didn't know.
I didn't know.
Now we all know.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I mean, she's a citizen.
It matters, because I wanted to get ahold of her, and I said that in the meeting.
I sent an email. I did send an email, Mr. Dockett.
Well, you didn't send one to me.
I'm sorry that you didn't get it.
Yeah, well, that's the way it goes, quite often.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right. Moving on. Correspondence and announcements. Tonight, we have the Township Manager's Report in the packet. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ains tonight from this report? He's been really active since he's been here.
Yes.
Is there anything that perhaps Mr. Ains would just like to summarize at this time? Or discuss, or bring up?
As was mentioned, they have been very active and continue to be, but this format is not what I'll be using in the future. This was intended to show the board.
Mr. Ains, pull the mic right up to your mouth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll start over. The format on this report was not intended to be the one I'll keep using. I just wanted to give you an idea of what the first month was about. After that, it'll be more of a topical one on just different issues that are faced by the township. But probably the biggest thing we're looking at now is the whole financial picture of the township, and then also the sewer issues involved with the treatment plant and so on. But I did want to mention to the board, I received a call today from a representative of the M.D.N.R. that we have been approved for the SAW grant, and that they were just clarifying some issues with me so they could send the proper documents out to be signed by the township. And so we should have official notice of that in October or November and get that signed. At that point, any expenses that were eligible from either the engineer or from our people at the treatment plant that have already been done, we can get reimbursed for those. So we're already starting to put together that information. And then going forward, I'm advised any eligible activities will be reimbursed within a two-to-four week time period of when we submit an invoice. So we'll try to keep that moving along. It's about a $500,000 project.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Any other questions?
Are there any matching?
Go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
Are there any matching funds?
Yes, that was one where you committed.
I think that's important for you to tell us what the matching. I think that's part of this, so I don't like that kind of stuff left out.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. I don't know what has been conveyed to you before, but it's a 10 percent match, so 90 percent is from the state and 10 percent is from the communities. So I did come prepared. It's, yeah, I don't see it now. Anyway, it was about $500,000. I've got the grant application here, so I can look it up if you want to know the exact numbers later.
$500,000, the grant or the?
The grant.
Okay, not the matching.
The match is about $50,000, 10 percent.
Well, I think that's important for us to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that the staff time that has been put in by our wastewater treatment personnel applies to that match, so that we won't have to actually come up with dollars that that would be applied to that match. So we'll all have the opportunity to read the SAW grant in the near future and understand what it has to say.
Yes, it is one where your efforts can be applied as your match for the grant.
Ms. Belliger?
This is a state grant, you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes.
Because it does need to be, I really have an issue with grants. Somehow, we got to get away from grants, because it is just redistributed, redistributed tax money. You know, it comes out of people's pockets before it gets given back to different branches of government. I don't know what we can do about it here, but it needs to be remembered where this money comes from.
Yes, it says on the application, it's Michigan Department of Treasury and the Michigan Finance Authority.
Anyone else? Okay, the next item is?
Thank you.
August 8th, special election expenditure. That was an item of information in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about that? Mr. Dockett?
Ah, yes, the, we have a tentative total of $4,381.73. You know, this was a special election that this board voted on to have in the middle of summer when everyone's on vacation and they're off work. And this, I think there's something, it should be only in November, and I think that might be coming up, going to be a new law or rule, that they can only ask for this money in the November election. And that makes a lot of sense to me. Does anyone know what the ballot, the $4,381.73 does not include the ballot money? It does not include the maintenance support for the middle school? So have we got any updates?
Nothing yet. Nothing yet, from the count.
I think I'd like to see this back.
Okay.
On the, on the, for the, for us to discuss again when we get the rest of the money.
Okay, that's fair.
We don't have our ballot here tonight, but I'd like to make sure it gets put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
If we have the totals.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett. Anyone else? The next item is the board retreat. I know board members are being, have been polled for a date that we can all be available, and that's been a challenge. There is not a single Saturday when we are all available. And so we've also polled for a Friday night, and that's, is turning out to be challenging also. I do want to mention that it's possible that I will be available September 16th, which is a Saturday, and so we could possibly do it that day, but I won't know until after Labor Day. So if you want to keep that Saturday open, that would be great. Alternatively, our other date when we have the most of us available would be Friday, September 22nd. And so we could potentially, and we could tentatively schedule Friday, September 22nd, and then if people don't mind hearing after Labor Day, we could potentially do it on a Saturday if that's preferred. Ms. Belliger?
Did we have a Tuesday, we were discussing a possibility, a Tuesday between a couple meetings? I'm just curious. I thought we were kind of left there, and I don't know where that ended.
We have a Tuesday, but Ms. Chick is unable to make that date.
Oh, okay.
And we have a bunch of question marks by, but there's a question mark by your name on that date and a question mark with Ms. Zelenak on that date also.
Yeah, I was open on.
Right.
The 23rd?
The 22nd would be a Friday. So we could tentatively schedule for a Friday pending after Labor Day. I'll know whether we could do it Saturday or not, and I'll be there, and then we can all be there. So if you're okay with laying low and having it be a little loose for a few days.
Yeah, we can't do September 22nd.
You can't do September 22nd?
I can't do that weekend of September 22nd, no.
Okay, there's no mark by that date, but okay.
Yeah, so no for me.
Okay, so I'll put no down. I'm expecting that I'll be free September 16th, but I can't guarantee that right now. All right, we'll continue to search for a date, but keep your September 16th open.
September 16th?
Yes. And then morning or afternoon, we'll figure that out. Mr. Dockett?
Yes, I'm available at any time, but not during business hours. I don't know when you're talking about this Friday. If we're going to do it on a Friday, it's not in the daytime.
It would be in the evening.
I mean.
It would, Friday, it would be a Friday evening if we did it. I hope you're available on Saturdays during the day.
Uh, I, well, I see on here where it looks like a two-hour meeting now. Last year, we had a five-hour supposedly, and then it ran over about 45 minutes. I'm not interested in a meeting like that. So are we going to say it's a two-hour meeting, or?
We are saying it's a two-hour meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So stay loose on that one, but we'll see what we can do. Okay, the next item are presentations, and we have Parks and Rec proposal here tonight. We have Mr. Iaquinto, who's the Chair of the Parks and Rec Board. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. As we supplied in the packet, we are proposing a $5,000 minimal budget, $1,000 for community garden, $1,000 for the bark park, $1,000 for the river walk, and $2,000 for the community park. $5,000 in total. And we would also like to offer the Parks and Rec Board, we would like to offer our services to the Township Board of Trustees and the community of Northfield Township to manage the new community park, essentially serving as the go-to group for the maintenance, event scheduling, et cetera, for the park property. If you look in the attached sheets that we also supplied, which were our guiding principles, and this was put together by the Parks and Rec Board for our master plan in 2016. Our guiding principles, our marketing and materials should represent Northfield Township as a highly recreational area with a focus on natural beauty. Parks and Recreation Commission should create and promote a trail system that is multi-seasonal, trails in autumn for color tours, in winter for cross-country skiers, et cetera. Parks and Rec Commission should focus on opening Whitmore Lake up to the community by creating a public access points. The Parks and Rec Commission should focus on physical park assets in the Hamlet area. The Parks and Recreation Commission should be a leader in creating programming coalitions between different entities within the community. The Parks and Rec Commission should focus on developing passive recreational opportunities such as trails, picnic areas, and natural parks. The Parks and Rec Commission should focus on developing active recreational assets such as BMX parks, frisbee parks, golf, bocce ball, courts, et cetera. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Dockett?
Yes, I believe if, I'm looking at this, and Community Park, is that, is that the one by the post office? What's, do we have a name for this, or is that the name?
I have just heard it referred to as the Community Park, so that's what I put it as, Mr. Dockett, but if there is, whatever the board feels the name is, is the name.
Well, I just want to know what we're talking about.
Yeah. It's the park, the lakefront park adjacent to the post office. That's, that's what I know it as, is the Community Park.
Okay, I have some questions about that. I don't want to end up with another deal like we have on the non-motorized path. I believe that if we're going to do something with a park there, I'm not for the park, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for it, but I would say that we need to do what anyone else in this township would do. We need to get curb cuts there. We need to get with the road commissions, the first thing we need to do. Where is the ingress and egress going to be? If this was a private outfit doing this, that's the way it would work. So I'm saying that we've got a long way to go on that park or anyplace else until we get to the road commission, find out the ingress and egress, get to the planning commission, find out what they have to say about it, how we do it. So that's my input. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dockett. I would just like to mention, I see that you'd like to be the go-to group for maintenance, and that's all great. I'm good with that. As far as event scheduling goes, we have Civic event permits, and we have, and the Parks and Rec Committee only meets monthly. And my concern is the timeliness about that and the turnover, and it should be just a simple application process, so I'm thinking that that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. But as far as the Parks and Rec being helpful at the, at the community park with, you know, whatever. know, whatever there might be trash, or the picnic tables, or the, or the site.
Or porta-johns, or things of that nature.
Right, right. They have a lot of ability and, you know, and some funding potentially here, so that would be really helpful for that area and having a vision for it also. So, I'm appreciative of the work that the Parks and Rec Committee has done. And there's a lot of potential down there. That's gonna be a key area, so I, I think it's important that, that Parks and Rec do have some funding. I'm, would like to have that done in the context of our entire prioritization of our budget, though, and that might, that will be coming in a, in a few weeks. So, I just wanted to, to mention that. The other thing I noticed was that I couldn't find any bylaws for the Parks and Recreation Board. And it was mentioned once at a, at a board, Township Board meeting that the Parks and Rec Board was gonna work on that, but maybe it got set aside. And I'm just wondering if you might have some of those, or might put that on your to-do list for the Parks and Rec Board? So, are, are you aware of any, Mr. Iaquinto?
We have very minimal bylaws, just kind of our guiding principles that we do go by. We have never been asked to supply a set of bylaws. If the Township Board wants us to, I mean, we can gladly work on that. I, I guess I would ask, for what purpose and for what, how in-depth are you, are you asking?
Well, sometimes there's by, there are bylaws that stipulate, like if people are absent, there's an opportunity for replacement. It, it lays out the, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary.
Yes, we do have guidelines and bylaws for that.
Okay, that's all I'm looking for.
In, in reference to that.
Okay, that's all I was looking for, so that we could have something more official. I'm trying to officialize all of our committees and commissions, and so, I think that'd be really helpful to have something like that. I did notice in the Board of Trustees' minutes, when you became a board, that they did discuss ten thousand dollars being set aside a year for the Parks and Rec Board, which was my intention when we went into this budget year. And, and it was just so very, very tight that, that I couldn't put that in.
And we were given a ten-thousand-dollar budget for the previous fiscal year, and I believe we only used two thousand. We are very conscious and we, you know, are only looking at funding for the areas that it needs it if, and again, being very fiscally responsible. We had a budget of ten thousand, we only spent two, so, you know, we are very conscious. We are a volunteer board. Everyone volunteers their time, not only for the meetings, but then for all the activities that we're doing, which is the bark park, the community garden. And again, both of those have been very, very successful. We have helped out with whatever we have been asked to for the community park. So, you know, again, we're a volunteer group that, you know, is there to just offer assistance to the board and to serve the Northfield Township Presidents.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more questions or comments? Ms. Otto?
So, what I'd like to know is for each of these line items, what are the dollars budgeted for?
So, as an example, the community garden, to build additional boxes for mulch, for, you know, trimming branches, for just any incidentals, things of that nature. The bark park, for grass cutting, for the disposal of the waste that is, they're generated. Different things along those lines. The river walk, this would be to supply some mulch to, to kind of just have a budget item for things like that. Community park would be for, such as porta-johns, for maintenance, for different things like that, that the board feels that, that should fall, if the board feels that should fall within the Parks and Rec, then those expenditures could be used for things like that.
Was that all, Ms. Otto?
Um, I was just gonna say, basically, I'm, I'm just gonna come out and say it, the, that property wasn't, was just named only because we needed to have a name for, for the time of the open house. We needed an official name. So, the board never voted on the name. The, there was no, no official saying that it would be a park. All it said is we, we purchased the land and we wanted to do something with it. So, that was the whole intent of doing something with it. And there was no, and I know that we're going through the process of hiring planners and everything and going through that whole process. My concern is, is if we're doing that, I don't want it just to become a park. There has to be something more to it. I don't mind us doing something there, but I don't feel that if we hand it over to the Parks and Rec, then it becomes, then the perception is, it is a park. It's nothing more than a park. So, I, I'm not for having the Parks and Rec have oversight over that property. As far as any of these other items, I appreciate you giving us detail.
Thank you. And again, we are just offering, if the board would like us to be kind of the go-to for that property for the board, by all means, again, it's, the board's call, but we're just offering our assistance if you would like that.
Ms. Chick?
I'm thinking that, as far as it being a park, I think regardless of what we decide we're finally going to do there, there will be a portion of that property that will be a park. And if the Park and Recreation, Recreation wants to help with maintenance and that kind of thing, I don't have a problem with that. As far as, again, scheduling events, I think that might be an issue because that would be a board function, so. If we're going to do this and all the Parks and Recreation to have some kind of oversight over the, that property, the park part, part of the property, then we have to be very specific about, in what capacity.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger.
Regarding the, what he's talking about, regarding the overseeing of the park, I don't know that overseeing is the proper word. There's a lot of question. Who do we talk to if we wouldn't have a family reunion there? Who do we talk to? Where do we get the approval? This kind of thing is the question people are having, and I guess perhaps just making it more known as to who do we get them in touch with? And so, I think that's where this was coming from. And regarding bylaws, I don't believe this Township Board has any bylaws. Can't find them on the web.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Yep. The CBA, the Planning Commission, they all have, the DDA, they all have bylaws.
I looked for bylaws and could not find them for this board. Because that's just, that was a little over a year ago when I was running for office, I couldn't find any bylaws. Thank you.
Well, we'll look for them, thanks for bringing that up. One thing I do want to mention about the Parks and Rec Board having done the master plan, that is a critical component for us to apply for matching grants to do anything associated with a community park portion down there. And we could use that to acquire land, buildings, or, you know, to do our fishing pier, to do anything down there. So, I think the Parks and Rec Board, it, it's a critical player in, in what we want to look, look at into the future. But no, I, my intention was not that that entire twenty-four acres would remain a park forever. I don't think the Township could afford that. And, but it certainly, I think our citizens are expecting a good chunk of that to be a park. And, and I think the Parks and Rec Board will be helpful for that, so. Any other questions for Mr. Iaquinto at this point?
I just have a, just, I mean, I think it's important to have balance in our community, such as these items on this list, the community garden, the bark park, the river walkway, the community park. And I know that later on, there's a proposal from the Park and Recreation to do the non, or starting non-permanent, permanent park path, which is, I think, designed of, of one of the plans that we've had with the planners. So, I think it's very important to have these functions in our township. And if I recall, our, our budget was about one point two million or one point six million? I think it was one point six million. So, we're, we're talking a very small percentage of our overall budget, less than half percent. And again, I think it's important to have balance within our community and fitness and walkways that are safe. And I, so, I support, I support what the Park and Recreation is asking for. And I, I'm not sure, you know, if we, are we talking about waiting to go to our offsite to discuss it? Are we talking about waiting to where we are in our budget later in the year to fund these items?
I'm, I'm thinking that after, when we have our, our board retreat and we set our goals and our priorities, that's the time to actually distribute the funds. And that should be relatively soon. So, then everyone will know what to expect. And that's my feel, anyway. The, the board can disagree with that, but.
So, we've already had our budget, so we've kind of distributed the funds, and these were funds that weren't distributed. So, we're thinking that at that retreat, we're gonna have a different perspective.
We had about twenty-five thousand dollars that was remaining, but we have since been, some of those funds have needed to be pulled for certain items. However, our non-motorized path came in, twenty-three thousand dollars under budget. Okay, so that will be really helpful. And, and that was managed by Tetra Tech and Fonson. So, that came in under budget, which will be really, really helpful. So, we'll have a few of those kind of things to talk about at our board retreat, to see where we can find the funds to do some of these good things. And I think it's, it's important to put all of these things into the context of all of the other needs that we have, such as putting out the RFQ for the North Village. And, and then we have Parks and Rec, we have Peoples' Express, we have the Land Preservation Committee, we have a master plan that needs to be taken a look at. So, there, there are several items that we need to consider as we move forward. And I think it's important that we put it all into context and we know kind of how much we're dealing with funding-wise, so, anyway. Now, Ms. Chick?
I understand that we need to discuss at our retreat our goals. I don't think that putting this off past our goals is necessary, that we could put this on the agenda on our next meeting to vote on. The portion I would be considered talking about at our retreat would be in what capacity the Parks and Rec would be doing whatever they want to do at the park area.
And that's, I would agree on that, too. I'd offer a motion, why, why not do it today? I'd say make a motion that we allocate five thousand to the Park and Recreation.
I'll support that.
Ms. Bellinger had a, had a comment.
Um, that was basically my questions. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So, we, we want to go ahead and, I had allocated five thousand dollars to Parks and Rec in the last budget, and everybody else wanted it pulled, so.
Only because we wanted to hear what they wanted the money for.
Only because of the process.
Because of the process, okay. We have another group coming before us in a couple, in a couple weeks. And just remember that we're gonna want to have something left, too.
I think we have plenty. So, anyway, motion on the floor, Madam Supervisor.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Elnack, and support by who? Ms. Chick, okay. To allocate five thousand dollars to the Parks and Rec Board?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a, for the items described in their presentation tonight, if I may add that.
For discussion?
Do we have any more discussion on this?
Yes. Do, does a Parks and Rec need to come to the board in order to spend this allocated money? Does a Parks and Rec need to come here and say, oh, we'd like to get five hundred dollars with the mulch for this blah, blah, blah?
That was a question at our last board meeting, and, and Mr. Main suggested that they may need to do that, and I would like clarification.
We, we can certainly look into it further, but generally speaking, the, the general rule is that at a township level, the power to contract is with the Township Board of Trustees. So, to the extent that it's, that it's a contract, it certainly needs to come to the board unless there's separate statutory authorization for the Parks and Rec Board to spend. I've not looked into the statute for the Parks and Rec Board, anything remotely resembling recently. I'd be more than happy to look into it for the board if you'd like for me to, to see, see what it says. But I would expect that probably what this would be is it would be, in effect, the board would be allocating five thousand dollars to be spent on Parks and Rec, and then the Parks and Rec Board would probably be making recommendations to the board on how to spend that money, which the board may then just say, okay, yeah, that's fine, we'll sign up the contract for that. So, the Parks and Rec Board would still probably be doing the vast majority of the bu, the work, the vast majority of the recommendation on how that gets spent. But the actual mechanics of it would be that the contracting would be done at the board level.
And again, we don't enter into contracts because we don't have the authority, but again, we need to go and buy wood for boxes, we need to buy mulch, we need this. That's what, you know, we're, to me, it's a line item that if the board allocates it for that, then we could spend it as long as we're not entering into a contract obligation on behalf of the township, because we don't have that right, and we understand that, and we don't want to assume that, right?
We did not ask for any, the last time around either, right? We, you got the ten thousand and you spent it the way it was intended to be spent.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Dockett?
I guess, you said we had some savings on the non-motorized path. Well, we may have had some savings on it, but it was a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project that took us seven and a half years. So, I don't see how we had savings on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We do have line items here, though, you know, where we're allocating for community, you know, so. We'll let, we'll get a little clarification from Mr. Main's at the next meeting, but I think we can go ahead and have a vote to allocate or not these funds. So, if, are we done with discussion here? Okay, Ms. Manley, call the roll.
Chick?
Yes.
Shockley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dockett?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Zellnack?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the Peoples' Express request for funding. And we have Mr. Purrington here tonight?
You do.
Welcome.
Speak close.
I think it is.
Thank you.
Jim Purrington, nine-one-six-two Posey Drive. And I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors for the Peoples' Express. And the first thing I want to do is apologize, because when we got funding previously from you last year, we said we would provide you with a quarterly report of how we were spending that and the services we were given. And that fell through the cracks, and belatedly, we've provided it now. But we've taken steps so that won't happen again if you do approve our funding for this year. I think all of you got this whole chart. And last year, you did provide us with ten thousand dollars to be used. We were able to get additional funds because of that. And we actually provided thirty thousand dollars worth of services for that ten thousand. If you'll notice here, we have the first three columns are the first three quarters. We're, we're in a fiscal year of October to October. And then, the last one is July, and that's a single month's figures, which are a little lower, but. We're, we're servicing a lot of different people because of your generosity. You know, if someone, we have a disabled member of the community in a wheelchair, they need to go to the VA hospital. We can provide them with a minibus with a lift, a driver, pay for the fuel, take them to the VA for six dollars each way. And that, that's remarkable. If they want to go to Polymarket and shop, it's a dollar each way. If they have some excess jewelry and they want to go to the pawn. If they have some excess jewelry and they want to go to the pawn shop, it's a dollar each way. Those are good services. And these people that take advantage of it, uh, are desperate for this kind of service. We also do some, some regular, uh, transportations as well. That may be to the library or, or other things that people can't use unless they have an automobile. So, thank you very much for generosity before. We've taken steps that, should you pass us, we will make sure you're given quarterly reports. Our board will be getting those first. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Dockett?
Uh, yeah, I had someone living in one of my, like, by the way, if they were wanting to come to Pawn Shop, I'll pay for it. Uh, there's, uh, uh, they had to, they had to call 48 hours in advance. Uh, I, I thought that was.
Depending on, depending on when it is, but we do have schedules. And, and earlier is better.
So, so you're saying you don't have to wait 48 hours?
Generally not. But at times you may. We would like 48 hours.
Well, that's what, that's what they were told every time they called.
Well, when you're scheduling a driver and a, and a bus, sometimes it does require that.
Well, I'm not asking to defend, I'm just asking if it's true or not. Is that the policy?
Well, maybe even like more.
Is that, is the policy 40, is the policy 48 hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
As a rule.
Ms. Otto?
In the agreement, under the terms of payment, it does say that, um, that you're going to leverage, um, a federal grant for $10,000. If we give $10,000, you're going to leverage a grant for $10,000? And then, is there additional grants? You said, it says from the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority has provided two grants. Is that an, is that what brings it up to 30?
Yes, the AATA, also state money is funneled through them to us.
Okay.
We, we don't get any direct state money.
Okay.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
I wondered how, how many, how many individuals, in, unique individuals? I know we're all unique out there, but, um, how many unique individuals receive service from Northfield Township for, for Pe, People's Express?
We don't, we do not track that as far as, I mean, a lot of these are going to be the same person may use it, you know, once a week, twice a week. We go do it by rides, by how many we provide.
I just know our community center has about 99 people, you know, that are, you know, do something there on a year's time. And I just wondered if you had any data, was it 25, is it 40, or, you know, what is it, you know?
I, I don't really have a figure.
Okay. And then, um, I was looking on the letter on the front, and it says that the contract is from October 1st, 2017, to September 31st, 2018. But I'm seeing that the contract that was signed, um, was from January 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2017. So, I'm wondering why the difference in the contract year.
Good point.
It should be different, and I don't have an answer, but I'll find one for you.
Okay.
Find another thing on the sheet where it talks about how many millions of dollars they have insurance. It contradicts itself. Is it three or is it five?
We have five.
Well, it says three in the contract.
If I may add, um, is it okay, Jim, if I speak a little? Um, we have updated it since the contract. When this contract was written, it was three, it is now five, so that will need to be changed. And I know at the time, our lawyers had asked us to have five, and we now have five.
And I think it was a requirement of the township at the time, too.
They wanted it, but they would accept the three, but now we have gone to the five.
Um, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
I think if I recall, because it, the contract, um, it was, I don't know if it was presented before November. And awarded before November, but the contract didn't get signed until, like, January. It wasn't executed until then. That's why. The dates are the way they are.
So, um, Mr. Fink signed it, um, on October 4th, but People's Express didn't sign it until, um, because this is not the one that was signed by People's Express. It's on the very back where the signature's on.
Yeah, I thought it was done before the board went in. So, yeah, it's 10-5, so I don't know why the contract was done that way. It could be because of the previous contract ended at that time period, so we just carried it through.
Mr. Main's seems to have an answer here.
That, that's what I would expect.
Okay.
Um, I, I would think probably, you know, give People's Express credit for being on top of this stuff rather than waiting until December to ask for us to sign up the contract again. Uh, I, I think it would be appropriate to, for the next one to go January 1, 2018, to December 31, 2018, if the board is so inclined to, to agree to it. The fact that we're agreeing to it now doesn't impact the term of the contract as being whatever is stated in the contract. So, despite the fact that Mr. Fink signed the contract in October, the term of the contract was still January to December.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. I, I didn't get all my questions answered before y'all jumped in. I'm going back to me. Okay. I have a page, uh, on page two of the act, of the contract, it talks about, um, the terms of payment services. And I was wondering, um, when it's talking about, it says the township shall pay to People's Express the sum of $10,000 annually. With this contract, you can leverage another $10,000 in federal funds, bringing it to $20,000. Then when AATA or Triple ATA gives you two grants, um, the first grant is for medical rides reserved for seniors or persons with disabilities. And the second grant is for anyone going to work. So, I wondered, um, how, how you track the fact that the first grant is for this and the second grant is for that? Or does that not matter to you?
I think it's a matter of which column you put it in after you do the ride. You know generally what you're picking up, whether you pick up someone with a disability or, you know, and whether someone's going to work.
So, are you using up all of your $5,000 for seniors or persons with disabilities? And, you know, I don't know how you.
Well, if you look at the figures here, yes, we are.
Okay.
If, if you look, look here, the, I mean, the total costs, and this is, this is a partial year. Uh, I don't know how to, how to tell you which column I'm looking at. But where the cost, had you not given us the money, would have been $37,658. In fact, the cost of the residents were set with $7,117.
Right, but I, but I am seeing that says there is no cost to the township for these rides. So, that the two grants that are being provided by AATA appear to cover all of those, and it isn't costing the township anything for those, probably until that you run out of grant funding.
Right.
That way. So, it, the numbers that are existing in the chart, are these just the ones that Northfield Township is paying something for? And those, those, that other $10,000 potentially, there are more people that aren't in this chart?
No, this is, this is the entirety of the people from Northfield Township. So, they're included within there.
Okay. But about a third of them, then, we don't pay anything for, it's from those other two grants?
Correct, they're incorporated in there.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Chick?
I just have a question on page two, item number three, terms of payment services. First sentence is the township shall pay to PEX the sum of $10,000 annually. Does that sentence, sentence bind us to annually allow them $10,000 if we agree to it?
Yes, but since the term of the contract's only one year, then. It's, it's only one annual contribution.
Okay, okay. Ms. Bellinger?
Um, there's talk of all the savings that, um, like, it would cost $30 to $40 a ride if we don't, if the township doesn't pony up $10,000. That's assuming that every single person that used the discount service would actually pay the higher fee.
That's true, we have more people using it now. Because they can afford it.
Which is quite erroneous, because people would not pay that higher fee. They would find transportation elsewhere.
Or not go.
Or what?
Or they wouldn't go.
Right. So, it's, it's erroneous to say that it's a savings. And I want to return to, you know, the taxpayers have been paying thousands of dollars covering the cost for the property that this People's Express is currently residing at. I would like to see People's Express giving us something back as opposed to trying to grab more from us. I would like some People's Express giving discount services to the Northfield Township residents, since their business is located in Northfield Township and are tax exempt.
We do give them a discount because of your funding.
Not because of the funding, but because of the funding with regards to the $6,000 per year for at least the last six years that other taxpayers have had to absorb.
Well, it's true, we are a nonprofit, and by state law, we're allowed to not pay the property tax.
That's, that's right, that's fine. I understand that.
There are other nonprofits, too. One that shares that same facility, uh, which is the food pantry, Northfield Human Services, uh, also shares that. And we'd like to believe that we're providing an essential service to many residents of the, of the township. And in both cases, the food pantry, but also in, in transporting people that may or may not have any other choice.
Well, how is this different than what you would give to Webster? Somebody from Webster calls you, they can get the service as well. If somebody from Ann Arbor Charter calls you, they can get the service as well. This is countywide and even goes over to Green, to, uh, to South Lion.
Yeah, and in these different communities, South Lion gives us over $20,000.
Right. They're not, they're not in this county. That's, you get taxed money from people in this county already.
No, we provide service for over three, three counties. We cover little areas of.
And you charge them because they.
No.
See, I'm saying that Washtenaw County already helps you out, Northfield Township already helps you out through the tax break. And so, yes, if South Lion does pay you, well, that makes sense because they're not already giving you the tax break. So, what I'm trying to say is that I feel that because you're housed in Northfield Township and the Northfield Township residents are covering that lost tax revenue, that I believe that People's Express should give our township residents a discount without requiring additional $10,000 from the board. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
Ms. Chick?
I just, the discount, the savings is to the person we're providing the service to. It is essential for these people to be able to get to their doctor's appointments, uh, to wherever they need to go to manage their daily lives. And, uh, I think the community should have some responsibility in helping people that can't help themselves. And that's what the service provides, transportation.
Um, Ms. Manley?
Do, does People's Express get funding from other communities?
Yes.
Say like Webster, like Green Oak?
Pardon?
They do?
Yep, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Virtually all of them.
I mean, we, if I may, we get funding from Green Oak, City of South Lion, City of Celine, City of Wixom, Chartered Township of Lion, and Chartered Township of Milford. So, we do get funding from other communities.
And these are, most of these are in Oakland or Livingston County.
Um, Mr. Dockett?
Uh, Lenore, you said we have updated our contracts. Are you on the People's Express Board?
Yes, I am. Proudly, I am on the People's Express.
Are you, are you voting tonight?
I am not, I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
Ms. Otto?
Um, for the, um, the money that you get from the Ann Arbor Authority and for the disability and that, when you apply for the grants, you show that you get money from us. Is that required to get money for those grants? Okay. So, otherwise, we would not be covered.
We would not get matching funds.
We would not get matching funds even for those grants and help the medical disability or the senior citizens in our area.
Not all, but.
Yes, I understand. Okay.
So, are you saying that our 10 goes, gets matched by 10? But as she was mentioning, the disabilities is separate, and you still receive that grant for the people with disabilities?
But he has to show it in his, in, you know, when he applies for that grant for disability and for the seniors, that he's received money from us in order to get that additional money.
I think that's what we're trying to clear out. That's not necessary, is it? It's not necessary for, I, I'm asking, is that correct? That in order to get the five and the whatever, the other two grants, that you need to receive something from our township? I don't believe that part is true.
What we, what we receive from you, we get a matching 10. We also get.
Now, now also is separate from our 10?
Correct.
Separate from the township giving you 10, what do you get? Pretend the township isn't giving you 10, what do you get?
Then we get just the, the stuff for the handicapped.
For the handicap?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all, I just wanted to clear that, thank you.
So, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Ms. Chick?
I believe, uh. The last time we had this discussion, and maybe, Lenore, you remember, if we did not provide this service to the residents, the cost to go from Northfield Township to, um, say, Ann Arbor to the hospital was something like $30 or $40, wasn't it?
Each way.
Yes, mhm.
You are correct, um, Ms. Otto.
Thank you.
Or Ms. Chick? Correct. May I add a few things?
Well, my point regarding the ad.
Ms. Zelnok would like to continue to add.
So, if, if I may add, is, as Mr. Dockett has indicated, I am on the board, that's why I'm not present. I'm on the Township Board as well as the PEX and Northfield Human Service Board, so that's why I'm not presenting this evening, and I will be abstaining. Um, in, in regards to the 48-hour notice, we do do a lot of scheduling. We service a lot of people. You can see how many people we're serving in just Northfield Township. So, we do ask that you call in advance 48 hours. You can take your opportunity and do it 24, and you can call the day out, but we may not have a bus available or transportation on that day. One thing we do note is that at 3:00 PM, everybody seems to want to be somewhere at 3:00 PM, either to the doctors. And so, it, it's amazing, that is like our most popular time, so we cannot always accommodate a 3:00 PM. We may have to get you there earlier. Um, the other thing I would like to say is that we just went through an MDOT audit, like, two, three months ago. We were 100%. They found nothing wrong with anything, and we were the only community in the area that passed 100%. So, that was, and it was an impromptu audit. They, um, we had very, like, a day notice and they showed up, so that was very impressive. Um, let's see here. As far as, I mean, we track the people. I mean, when someone gets on, if you're Joe Smith, we make sure Joe Smith gets on. So, it's not like you call and you're Joe Smith, and then Veronica shows up. So, we know who we're supposed to pick up and the name, and we verify that name. Do we statistically report that? No, because there was a, yes, we could, but we, that would be very time-consuming. But at the time we pick you up, we know who we're picking up, and we have the name, and you have to show that you are that person. So, we just don't, you know, someone else comes. And, um, as far as saving goes, um, I just remind people that at one point in time, um, Northfield Human Services and People Express was in the community center, it was shared. And it was because of us being a nonprofit that the community center was built. Without that, the township would have had to pay for that because it was funded. Basically, unfortunately, to some through grants, but I don't want to give up grants because if other people are going for them, I want to get our share. Um, if you look at the amount of money that we're potentially going to save the residents, it's $36,000. And if you multiply that by three years, that would be $108,000 in total. So, if we take the $10,000 for the next, the, um, previous two years and the $10,000 for this year, that would be $30,000. And if we were to add in the taxes that has not been paid because we are a nonprofit, that would be $66,000. So, overall, um, the residents are benefiting by $108,000 in the total cost, even with taxes, would be 66. So, I do think there's almost a 40,000, over a $40,000 saving, even if you do that calculation. So, I, I do think we are giving back. I am very passionate about being on the PEX Board. I'm glad that Jim actually nominated me as a board member and the board approved because it is something I really enjoy doing. So, that's my comments.
Thank you. Uh, Ms., Ms. Bellinger?
It is, I'd want to reiterate, it's presumptuous to assume a savings. If it's $30 or $40 for a one-way trip somewhere, it's kind of expensive. People are going to find neighbors, family, maybe pay the 30 or 40, a few will, Uber, some other way. To assume that every single one of these people that benefited by the lower rate would actually pay. actually pay the higher rate is an error. That's what I'm trying to reiterate, that people follow, you know, they want to save money, they're going to find a cheaper way to get there. That's what I'm saying, competition. Thank you.
Thank you, you've made that. Mr. Docket?
Yeah, I just want to mention what, what actually happened when that was built. The community food bank and People's Express was in there along with our community building. We had to have them all there in order to get the grant for 10 years. Then we start charging the food bank rent, and they moved, bought a place of their own.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't...
Now, now we're giving them 30 grand, looks like, or they already give them 20.
I don't think it's our role...
So I think the township has gained a lot by having the Northfield Human Services in Northfield Township.
Yep. And it's not our role as a township to say that you can or cannot buy a piece of property and exist as a nonprofit, so I don't think that that is an appropriate, you know, thing to use against People's Express. So, you know, you are a nonprofit and you get the tax right off, and that's, that's the way our system is. Churches get it.
And pointing out that taxpayers are subsidizing it is also a fact, that's simply it.
That's true. And that's true for the University of Michigan and the hospitals and churches and many, many other groups, so anyway...
They don't come asking us for additional funds.
I, I think I have had all my questions answered. What this board like to do about this particular one? Wait for our prioritization or make a motion tonight?
I, I would like to go, move forward with a motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the agreement with, with PEX, People's Express, Inc., for $10,000 to continue with the contract from January 1, 2017, through December 31 of 2018, and upon review of our legal attorney.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Chick.
The lawyer.
Is that Mr. Mainz?
I think that we just want to make sure that the motion reflects the increased insurance requirement from $3 million to $5 million.
Oh, okay. And amend it to show the increase from $3 million to $5 million for insurance and liability and property damage liability.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Chick. Do we have any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Manley, yes. Docket?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Bellinger?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Ms. Elnuck is abstaining.
I abstain.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Perrington. Okay. Next item is code enforcement. Welcome, Mr. Rankin. How long have you been working for us now?
Since the last time I was here.
A lot of our citizens have seen Mr. Rankin out there, and they look forward to seeing him come by. A lot of them do, actually.
Yeah, they do.
And I should play one of these, you know, thank yous that I got on my phone from having a situation cleaned up out there, and it, they were so grateful, so I have to say...
You see a lot of noise on Facebook about certain items, and then like a day later it's cleaned up.
Yep, yep. So anyway, welcome.
We have had some success.
I cannot, I cannot hear you, sir.
You might have to hold it right up to your, take it out and hold it up.
No. It might not be...
Yeah.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we have had some success, and we have a number of challenges, and we've got a number of ongoing projects in progress. And what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of give you a little background on what we encounter in terms of complaints and issues and our methods for dealing with some of these issues, as well as some areas where we may need to examine what our methods are and how we're going to move forward. A little background, when I started, the model was that code enforcement would be complaint-driven, and the focus was on areas of blight and nuisance within the township. A lot of the types of complaints that we encounter are neighborhood disputes or neighbor-to-neighbor disputes, a lot of them revolve around location of fences, possible encroachment on property, unwanted activities, uncontrolled or disallowed animals, driving or parking on the private property of others, and a lot of complaints have surfaced about issues that are decades old that never before have been addressed. Some of the blight issues include outside storage of interoperable vehicles, junk, rubbish, trash, a lot of unlicensed vehicles that are stored outdoors on people's properties. A lot of the junk issues are parts of vehicles, parts of equipment, building materials in areas that don't have active building permits, as well as property that's just not maintained in general, which would include buildings that are decaying and vegetation out of control, buildings that are open and unsecured that are dangerous, attractive nuisance. We've had noise complaints, both industrial as well as barking dogs, parties at people's houses. Currently waiting for it to get dark so I can go out and investigate, a light pollution complaint, where a series of neighbors surround one property that is being complained about with a lot of high-intensity lights that are shining into adjacent properties. One of the hot-button issues that some of you have probably heard about is parking of vehicles displayed for sale. At one point, I was not looking at those, then I was asked to try to clean up some of these areas where there were a lot of vehicles displayed for sale, some areas, there'd be multiple vehicles in one property right out at the road with for-sale signs, many of them, maybe one motor vehicle or an RV or something, boats, jet skis, snowmobiles, you name it, they're, they're out there. That's, that's something that I started doing without complaint, when it was complained about that we weren't doing enough on them. Immediately following that, after a lot of orange tags appeared, we got a bunch of complaints about, you know, why are you doing this? We've been here 30 years, nobody ever had a problem with us. So at this point, backed off, and we need to examine the existing language in the vehicles and parking section in Chapter 30 to see what makes sense for us to do. Another part of that is there's a lot of waterfront properties in the township where they park all manner of vehicles and equipment on the street address side of the property, which in many cases may not actually be the front setback. And we need to get a determination on what we're going to consider in those special cases. A lot of those areas don't have any possibility of moving vehicles behind the roadside setback because of the grade going down and limitations in the depth of those lots and things of that. Other things that we've seen since I got here are unsafe broken sidewalks, blocked sidewalks, blocked with trees and vegetation. And there've been a number of complaints of filling and excavating without permits or in excess of what may have been allowed on a conditional use permit on a particular site. So that's just a summary of some of the issues that I have encountered. What I've handed out to you is a rough cut at a flow chart in terms of the timeframe and the steps for dealing with different complaints. And it's kind of a fluid timeframe, because each case kind of dictates its own timeframe. A lot of people are not aware of ordinance, a lot of people have very limited means for dealing with issues to bring them into compliance. Some don't have the financial resources, some are people that have disabilities and challenges, it takes them a lot longer to get things done than what the ordinance section may call out. So we try to work with folks, try to educate them, try to get them to give us an action plan, which is reasonable in terms of timeframe to get whatever their issue is resolved. The last step is to issue a citation. And quite frankly, by the time we get to that point, we've invested a whole lot more in resources than we're ever going to get back by forcing somebody to pay a ticket. And that still doesn't resolve the issue in some cases. In some cases, that may be the answer. Some of the, some of the roadblocks that we hit are ownership of a vehicle, I can't establish that, we don't have a means for the code enforcement officer to get onto the lien system to determine the ownership of a vehicle. As an illustration, when I worked for the city of Ann Arbor, the area of code enforcement that we're talking about was under the police department. I was employed by the police department and had access to lien so we could determine who was responsible for a vehicle. Another issue is we cannot go on to posted property, it's posted no trespass. And oftentimes, especially in the eastern part of the township where you have larger properties, people will call in a complaint that's not readily visible from the road. So there's not much you can do unless you're invited onto those properties, and several of those people have made it abundantly clear that that's not happening. We track people down through the tax rolls in terms of written correspondence, sending out letters telling them what violation is and what needs to be done, get a lot of those letters returned. They don't have an address at the property, the taxpayer address of record, doesn't get a response, so we have to keep trying other approaches to get in touch with people. Another issue is that we have properties, at least one of which is owned by the township, that are vegetation overgrown, and we need to contract for services to get that corrected and then back billed to the property owner. And then there, there is in ordinance language that provides to have that attached as a lien against the property. We need to get the mechanism for the billing and the tracking of those transactions in place. That's something that we're currently working on, it isn't in place at this time. On the backside of the flow chart, we've got a pretty current, up until the beginning of this week, listing of some of the categories that we're working in and what, what we have that's on the books inactive and what's, what's either been resolved or is inactive because the complainant has requested that we take no further action at this time. And junk and blight, outdoor storage and deteriorating building property issues right now is the biggest one of seven active complaints. We've, we've done a couple interesting ones, where we had to go out with a decibel meter to industrial sites that had complaints about noise, and township doesn't own the equipment to do that. We had a private corporation that loaned us the equipment to do that in several cases. One of the other issues is we get party noise complaints that I get on my voicemail or email, and by the time I come in the following Wednesday, most of those parties are done. So we kind of direct people to public safety, it's something in the immediate, you got dogs running wild at night, those kind of things. We may get with Washtenaw County Animal Control. We try to direct people to an area where they can actually deal with some of these when we can't. That's the thumbnail sketch. Questions, comments?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Rankin at this point? Ms. Otto?
Is there any way, Bill, that we could have him submit something to the police department to look up for the, for the vehicles?
I don't believe that would be a proper use of lien.
Oh, okay.
Which, that can get us in a lot of trouble on the police department.
Okay, all right, I didn't know the, the requirements of it.
Yeah, what he's saying is because, one, because he doesn't work for the police department.
Okay, he doesn't have...
Right.
Authorization for access.
Right. I don't, I don't even have that.
Oh, okay.
And I work for the police department, so they're, they're very, 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 very stringent on use of lien.
Yeah, when, when, when I worked in Ann Arbor, we, I and my team were police department employees, so there is a difference.
Okay. And then for address checks, do we have access to Lexis at all?
Uh, yes.
Because you could, could, you could...
It's a little iffy. We do it for taxes.
Oh, okay.
No, we do look at that when we get return notices back from taxes, and it's kind of iffy.
Yeah, but at least it's something...
I mean, we do do that. That's, that is part of the process.
That would be an option to use too, is it's a software, web-based software that you can look up addresses.
Yeah, some are better than others.
We have, we have tried that with mixed success.
Yeah. Ms. Chick?
When you are indicating that there are some issues with some of our ordinances, the language has to be changed, are we presenting that to whoever can look into that? I mean, you, are you getting that?
A lot of the changes need to happen from this board. They're not, it's not zone, our zoning ordinance, it's not the planning commission that does that part, but it's us.
Okay.
And so...
It could be the CBA.
No?
No.
No, these are, no, these are all in the upper portion of...
Oh, okay.
So really, they're the general ordinances, I believe, of the township. And so we could take a look at those, some of those, and I, and I'm sure Mr. Rankin can, you know, suggest some that perhaps we take a look at. Apparently yard sales are, I mean, you can't have a garage sale, apparently. I had no idea, you know, but...
You can't.
So can you bring those issues to the board and have us go through them one by one?
We have had, had some preliminary discussions about some items that may or may not make sense the way they're currently written based on the makeup of the community. One of the areas specifically is, is some of the language about the storage of boats, RVs, recreational equipment on properties, and you've got numerous lakes, and everybody's got a boat or boats and other items of that nature, and a lot of those properties simply don't have the, the area where you could even do an indoor storage. That's, that's one example. Yeah, we'll definitely look at that, as well as, there's been discussion about the possibility of modifying the language in Chapter 30 that talks about parking vehicles displayed for sale into something that might be a little bit more reasonable.
Mr. Docket?
I don't need to tell you, but because if you've been in the business very long, but I, I hear all the time about people say, well, my front yard is in the lakeside, not, my backyard's on East Shore Drive, so that's one thing. And I think we should remember that these people are residents here, and you know, when she says you can't have a yard sale, you can't have a car parked there. We've got to be reasonable. One thing I wished you would not do is in your report, I'm reading from my Rankin, Rankin, code enforcement officer, you wrote in here that, you says you're, you're planning, let me see, I'm reading from the report, we've discussed the boat trailer parking, especially in lakefront lots, I wished you wouldn't, it, it sounds like it's selective enforcement when, when I read that in your report here. So I think, I think maybe we shouldn't have, that we're, we're checking out the people on the lake, especially.
Well, we're checking people everywhere, and I think what...
Well, it says here, it says here, we're especially, that's what it says, especially.
Right. And what we were discussing at that point, sir, was whether or not that was reasonable...
I don't, I don't, I think it sounds like selective enforcement, so...
To keep the ordinance language the same as it is or make some modification to accommodate those properties that don't have other options for placing boats correctly.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just saying I don't think that you should put that in writing.
Understood.
Well, we are finding portions of the ordinance that, that could be cleaned up or could be softened up or changed, because it just doesn't make sense in places. So I would think that, and I know Mr. Rankin... I would think that, and I know Mr. Rankin is, he talks to me about them, and he'll be talking to Mr. Ains about them too, and I'm sure he has. But we need to get that, get a list, and then have a few people take a look at that, and then bring something back to us. You know, some reasonable solution to some of the problems that we have. And while you mentioned lakefront lots, you know, they, they don't, boats are supposed to be, I believe, in back of the front of the house. So where's the front of the house on a lakefront lot? They consider it along the road, as opposed to along the lake. So, you know, so we just need to clean some of that up and make sure that we're being fair to all of our citizens. And, you know, there are people across the street that their front yard is their back, you know, looking at their backyard. So there's some issues there to consider. And I think we can, you know, make some intelligent changes to our ordinance to be kinder and, but still meet the needs that we have. Ms. Otto?
If we have anything in the ordinance that talks about setbacks in regards to parking, that type of thing?
There are.
Every, almost every one of our homes around the lake area has a variance problem because of setbacks. I mean, that's the one issue that we have at the ZBA all the time, is because we have to award a variance because of setbacks, because they want to either build or do something. The homes are built so close together.
Forty-foot lots.
Yeah, forty-foot lots. I mean, it's just, you know, where do you put this stuff? So you're right, we do have to look at it because some of it is, you know, they wanted it a certain way, but that's not how the community grew.
Yeah. And it should be noted that, you know, a lot of those areas, those homes are probably close to 100 years old.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, yes.
And so that was never, never even on the radar at that time.
They're paying a lot of taxes, so.
Yeah, the ones around the lake sure do. So the planning commission did develop an overlay district though, for, around Horseshoe Lake and Whitmore Lake, that takes into account some of those setbacks.
It made it a lot easier for the people to actually try and do something for their properties.
Yep. Right. And they wouldn't have to come before the ZBA. So we've been attempting to make, as often, we've been attempting to make some changes over the years. It's, you know, government never moves fast. So we're, but we're making progress. And I appreciate Mr. Rankin and all the work he's done. It's a tough job. He gets a lot of negative feedback, and he handles it quite well. And we sure hope he stays around for a while, Mr. Rankin, because you're doing some good things out there. But I do look forward to whatever suggestions you have for making this better and practical, you know?
But you do have a lot of support out there. There's a lot of people that really appreciate what you're doing and are anxious to have things done. We hear about it all the time.
Yep. Ms. Elma?
Your information has been plastered on Facebook.
We'll wear that.
That's one thing I'd, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Rankin for the job he does do. And I thought taxes, collecting taxes was difficult, but being an ordinance officer is more difficult. And I do think, Mr. Rankin, you do a fine job. And I do think you do try to balance and make sure the ordinances are being enforced, but take into consideration the situations that you run across that only you really know about. So I do thank you very much for the job you do.
Thank you.
And so we're gonna, I know Mr. Rankin has kind of put it, maybe has a list, or is developing a list of where ordinance could be checked. So what would be the next step? Do we have a timing that we'd like to, my thought is, you could put the list together, maybe work with the township manager, come up with recommendations. I don't know if there's any timeframe, and maybe the lawyer as well.
Yeah. The lawyer as well.
The three of them could, you know, have a powwow and, you know, some timing if we, you know, if there's any timeframe on it. With, by the end of the year, or?
That would be generous. Well, hopefully before that, but, you know, we have a lot on our plate.
I know. So I mean, I was just looking for a timeframe. I mean, I'd be generous to say, you know, something by the end of the year.
And you can whittle away at one item at a time.
Yeah, certainly.
We don't have to take it all at one time.
Right, right, right.
But some things are the way they are because of state law. So, you know, that's where Mr. Maines is important.
So I mean, would we like to visit one a month, or?
Well, maybe we can get an update, or a, you know, kind of a, see how things are going regularly.
And Mr. Rankin's report?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could just go for a couple of easy ones, like you can sell a car on your property, maybe, one, you know, just some simple, easy ones. Get a couple of easy ones done on the way.
Yeah, we were thinking, if you own it, it's on your property, and it, you know, and you've got a for-sale sign, that's okay, you know? And it runs, I mean, you know?
And so
It's licensed, you know, it's licensed.
But with that one, though, as Mr. Rankin indicated, he can't use the lien system. Is there some other system that he could have access to verify that it truly is the owner?
Knocking on their door, but hopefully not.
Okay.
You know, I don't think people are going to abuse it, you know?
Okay.
I really don't.
All right, all right.
I would hope not. Mr. Maines?
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have just two very brief things. My recollection is, and I'll have to check this against the ordinance, and perhaps this is something that we should change in the ordinance if not. I think that the ordinance regarding junk cars gets to the maintenance of a junk car on a property. So the ownership of the junk car is, to an extent, irrelevant. The question is the ownership of the property, which we can check against tax records. The ownership of the car is not necessarily as much of an issue. But the second thing is, I think, to Mr. Rankin's point, to make effective use of his time, I think with regard to coming to this board with potential revisions of ordinances, I think that probably Mike in our office and Mr. Ains should get together and prioritize, you know, what are the things that he's really getting called on to enforce a lot, where he's feeling there's a manifest injustice? Because that's where it makes the most sense to make a change, where he's actually having real problems on the ground, as opposed to sort of some more esoteric things of gee, this is silly, but there's no actual enforcement going on on that. So there's no real acute problem. Yeah, you know, garage sales, parking, you know, things where there's actually, people are complaining about it, or people are not. So I think probably a triage of that makes sense to do, and sort of bring the most acute issues to the board first. Just my two cents.
And I think he should be prioritized to health and safety issues above anything else. So health and safety is important. So, anyway. Okay. Did you, did you get any direct, I mean, do you need to know anything from us at this point?
Not at this point. I think the first thing we'll do is flesh out the list of the areas that look like they might need attending to.
Okay.
And prioritize it and get to work on those.
Great. Well, I hope this has been helpful to the public also out there, whoever's listening, to know what's going on with this, so they understand. But thank you very much. Thank you. Have a great evening. Good luck with the light blight. It's dark enough now. Okay, let's move on. Okay, purchase a fire truck. Next item. Mr. Wagner?
So after, I think this is the third time this has been on the agenda, and I think we finally have something that the attorneys agree with the fire truck manufacturer, that we can move forward with, and the township can be protected. The, in, the purchase agreement that you have in front of you, hopefully, will, we came up with a different one yesterday, and the only change to it was, it should say Smeal Holding LLC. Everything else that you got in your packet is the exact same. And it went out in an email, I believe, yesterday, and I hand-delivered it to Mr. Docket yesterday, so that everybody would be able to see what it is that we are looking to have approved. And at some point, we'll need to just make a decision as to whether we want to take advantage of the savings by paying the $216,819 when the chassis is complete. We don't have to make that decision tonight, but we can make that decision tonight, or we can make it when the chassis is complete. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Maines or Mr. Burns. I think there was a little hesitation, they're a little worried that we're putting that money out there, and we'll go eight or nine months before we actually see the completion. And that money may not be as protected as we would like it to be, if the company were to go under in that time. It seems to be a very stable, solid, they make, you know, 100 or 150, 200 fire trucks a year. So I don't think they're going anywhere anytime soon. But we can take advantage of it, or we can just pay the, agree to pay the full amount of the $484,294.72 when the fire truck's complete. And then we're really not at any risk at that point. So, and just real quick, this, this truck is a tanker pumper. We are combining two trucks that we have out on the floor right now. At each station, we have an engine and a tanker. And probably about a year ago, I went through and did a capital improvement plan for the fire apparatus. And we're trying to reduce the number of apparatus that we have by combining engines and tankers. And actually, we've already combined like a rescue and a brush truck. So it's probably a 15-year plan. And this is the first significant step towards that plan. And again, we're combining an engine and a tanker. And this price is a big number. But if you bought the two separately, you'd probably be looking closer to $700,000. And while that is a big number for a fire truck, it's pretty much what everybody's paying for modern-day fire trucks now, so.
Okay. Ms. Bellger?
How many expected years of use from this new apparatus are we expecting?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. That's good. And how much do you expect to get from the two trucks you're going to sell that this one replaces?
I'm trying to remember what I budgeted, but probably less than $100,000 for both of them.
I think I remember $90,000.
I think that's what, I think that's what I remember.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Otto?
How much would we save if we paid the 200,000 plus today?
$6,505.
Okay. But in the meantime, we could invest that money and get interest. So it's, you know?
It's not much of a savings.
Yeah, it's not that much.
I was thinking if we were saving over $100,000, then I would say, go for it, but.
Mr. Dockett?
When we send this out, regardless of what kind of, why it has to be sent out, we're sending out two trucks. I mean, it sounds to me, you said it's both.
I'm not sure what you're meaning by when you say send it out.
Well, I see, I see these big trucks going out, and they get down on North Main Street, turn around and come back. I mean, why, I'm saying if it's, if it's like two trucks, it doesn't mean there's, we need a pumper, or what's the other one?
Tanker.
A tanker. You've got to send it, you've got to send that big truck out to
Well, and so operationally, the way that works is, we would normally start off sending an engine that would have 1,000 gallons of water, and that has all the firefighting equipment on it. And then, because we have absolutely no municipal water supply in Northfield Township, every structure fire we have is a rural water supply. So we call for tankers. And then we also supply tankers to other communities for structure fires where there's no fire hydrants. So this is taking the two and putting it on the one, and it's making us more efficient, really. When we first get there, compared to 1,000 gallons, we're going to have 2,500 gallons of water, which will last us a lot longer, and we won't have the threat of running out of water, which is not that unusual in the rural water supply, rural structure fire.
Okay. So the difference between the 477-800 and the 484-29-294 is if we pay the six, we'll save 6505 if you pay it. And then we have to wait nearly a year for the truck to get built. Is that correct?
Well, and so what you're paying for is the chassis of the truck.
Yeah, we're paying for the chassis, and it's not financed.
That's correct. It's not financed.
If we pay cash.
Correct.
But it is financed if we don't pay cash. Is that correct?
I don't think
Well, where's the six, it's got to be financed, George. Where, how can we save six, how can we save?
I'm sure that's added in there. It's just not delineated in here. And we don't have to decide this today?
No, but I'm just trying to understand, where's the 6,500 coming from? It's coming because we're paying upfront for the truck
Right.
To sit there for a year, why, I mean, for the chassis, excuse me.
Right.
Why they build the truck?
Right.
Okay, so I can, I can picture that in my mind. Are there any other extras, extra equipment, you know, painting, decals, slogan, lights?
It's all included. The book of specifications is probably about this.
Okay.
And there are, like, we're getting ladders, we're getting what we call the porta tank. Now, what we're not getting is, we're not getting hose. We'll take the hose off the old trucks. Air packs, SCBAs, we'll take those off the old trucks. So there is some equipment, but not a lot.
Okay, there will have, okay. So, and we don't pay sales tax?
Correct.
We don't pay license plates?
I think we just, we just put one of our municipal plates on it.
Okay. Now, how about insurance? Has anybody figured out what it's going to cost us for a half a million dollar truck?
I don't know the answer to that, but I wouldn't think that it would be that much different than what we're paying on the two that we're already paying on.
Okay. And there's got, there's got to be, how is this being paid for? Where's the money, where's the half a million?
It's in the fund balance of the fire department budget right now.
Oh, how did it get in there? Did you get it off the general fund?
Uh,
I mean, where'd the money, where'd the money come from?
There was a portion that came out of the general fund.
How much, do you know?
I can't remember if it was 200 or
250,000 dollars was transferred.
Okay. 250,000 plus, plus another 25,000 that we, that we gave you. So we've given you 275. So that money is coming, is already out of our general fund. Now, what about, are you going to pay cash for the other half of this truck? When it's, are you going to pay cash for it? Or there's got to be, if there's $6,500 worth of savings on the interest on the 205,000, there must be eight or 10,000 dollars worth of interest on the other half of the
The total cost is 484,000.
And that's with the interest, is that?
That's with, that's included.
The interest on both, both?
Both, everything. And that, what that doesn't include, though, Mr. Dockett, that you and I have a discussion on every time you talk about this, is the 1.2 million that the fire department has given to the general fund over the last 10 or 11 years.
Okay. Well, we give you 800,000 a year, so, from the millage, so how, how do you figure, you're giving us that?
Because out of that millage, we pay the general fund.
They pay for this building.
Yeah. Well, and so does the police department, and so does, and so does the general fund.
That's true.
That's right.
So they all pay a third.
Okay, are we ready for a motion at this point?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase order for the Smeal Holding LLC to get the fire truck, the 2,500-gallon pumper tanker.
Can we add in there to the township manager to sign for that?
Yes, and authorize the township manager to sign the contract, or sign the purchase order.
We're not voting on the 6,500 bucks, is that right?
No.
No, we're voting on this purchase order that has, it's an amount of 484,294.72.
Could you include the purchase order number?
Pardon?
Include the purchase order number?
And the purchase order number is 2017-0000100.
If I may, Mr. Dockett, I just want to clarify to your question, that the purchase order does include in it the option to incur the savings by paying for the chassis upfront when it's ready? that the purchase order does include in it the option to say, to incur the savings by paying the, for the chassis upfront when it's ready. So that's not, that's not an issue that needs to be decided tonight.
I I understand it, but if we're paying, and if there's, if there's sixty-five hundred dollar rebate, I'll call it a rebate, whatever, back because we're paying cash. If we pay cash for the, for the vehicle itself, not, I mean, the 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 rest of it, there's two parts to the thing. It's about the same money for each one. So if we're paying cash for the second part of the truck, maybe it's luck, maybe there's sixty, another sixty-five hundred in there.
Right, and I I'm I'm not talking about that portion at all. My my only point to you was, because you had raised the question of are we voting on the sixty-five, I just wanted to make clear, we're not voting on that either way tonight.
No, but I'm curious to know if there's another sixty-five hundred dollars worth of savings, that's only, I'm asking the question.
There is a motion on the table?
Yeah, there's a motion, yes. So we have a motion by Chocley, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Does anyone, does anyone have an answer for me?
Um, we do not have that answer.
Thank you.
That is a good question. I mean, if there is a savings for paying cash for the first half, maybe there would be a savings since we're not financing for the second half, possibly.
That's not written into the contract, so I expect it's isn't, Ms. Otto.
What are CDs paying at this time?
It varies.
From one percent to one point five percent?
Um, somewhere like point eight, one, one point zero, yeah, one point three five, one point two five. That's what CDs are paying about right now. And I don't know, because I think they might be going down.
Oh, okay, cause I was thinking if you could put this in CD.
A good, a good one would be one, yeah.
It would be short-term.
I will work with Bill, I believe, we'll either go to Ann Arbor State Bank or, um, some of the banks that we already have, and put the four eighty-four into a CD, six months.
Sure.
Yeah, on both of those.
At least make some money on it.
Yep, now that we know that is.
And we're waiting for a truck to be made.
Now that we know that's a definite cash flow that we have available, we will take that and take it into one of our banks that we have approved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chocley, support by Otto, can I enroll, call vote, please? Zellinok?
Yes.
Check.
Yes.
Belliger?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manly, yes. Chocley?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
Okay, feel free to go home, Mr. Wagner. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is to reappoint, um, Chuck Steyer. I make a motion to reappoint Chuck Steyer to the Parks and Recreation Board, uh, for a term that ends, um, July first, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Chocley and support by, uh, Belliger. I'll give it to Belliger tonight. Okay, all in favor, oh, any discussion?
Yes, but I'm looking for my paperwork, just a second.
Could you pass it?
What did I do?
This is it, right here.
Huh?
This is it, you got it?
Okay.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
Okay, my question is, why, uh, are, why are we, the board, uh, three months late on making this appointment? Uh, his his appointment expired the last day of May, two thousand seventeen. Uh, so my question is, why did we wait three months? And the other part of the question is, why did Chuck, uh, send a letter to Marlene Chocley rather than to the trustee, to the board? I mean, what, if it would have been addressed to the board, and I would have got this three months ago.
Yeah, we could have made the motion, cause it doesn't necessarily need to be by a supervisor.
It it doesn't, and and it and it didn't, and that's why we had pulled it. However, the appointment was by recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, who, and that board did not meet, um, at a time where they were going to make that, well, that was, that was our understanding at the time, was that it was supposed to be up at the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, and they hadn't made that recommendation.
We made it, we we made the re, we made the recommendation.
That's why I was asking for bylaws, because it, I was told by Jennifer that they were, and and she had some document that said that it was by recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. So that's why the delay, but he has been serving, and, um, so we're just gonna ratify that.
And that really, if that, if that's the case, then it needs to be changed, cause it is the township board that makes the recommendation.
Yeah.
And I want us to get the information so we know when when these are up. I mean, I don't wanna sit around somewhere for three months. That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, can the, can they supply, like, the terms, uh, something with the terms on it, for each member?
Yes, and it's on the website, actually. If you go to the website, it does show up at the bottom of each of the boards, but I would like to have a master.
Yeah.
And, um, so that we can all keep track of that, and, um, I'd be asking, Ms. Belliger.
Mr. Steyer talked to me, uh, some months ago about this, uh, his desire to be, uh, returned to the Parks and Rec Board. And he had also told me that he spoke with the supervisor, and that the supervisor had said that she was liking to get somebody else in there, to get somebody new, and to sit, to create him an honorary member position. And, uh, that is what I was told by Mr. Steyer. Um, and that he also then told me that Marlene had said that he needed to be recommended by the board. So this is the information I got from Mr. Steyer. And, uh, that's, you know, that was where it was at, which, of course, it is, it was quite curious, I thought.
Well, it was, um, it was a desire on my part to get some new people involved, and that Mr. Steyer had been involved in a lot, for the long, long time for Parks and Rec. And we had some young, younger applicants with children that I thought would be a good opportunity for them to get acquainted to the board. And I thought he, and I actually asked if he would be considering, uh, or would consider the Board of Review in, and in addition to be an emeritus member of the Parks and Rec, because you can keep coming and participating. And it was up to him, and he's, he was not interested, so I didn't pursue that.
He strongly wanted to be on the Parks and Rec Board, and he said that he reiterated that with you.
Right, and I just asked a question.
I don't think you should have, I don't think you should have intervened. That is not right.
I can ask a question.
You don't have the power.
I don't have the power, but I can ask the question.
If you don't have the power, we have the power. We wanna know what's going on, not you.
Okay, I could have a private conversation with a, a, one of our members of our board, and it was just a question.
No, you, no, you sent him a letter.
I didn't send him a letter.
Yes, you did, he told me, you sent him a letter. You sent it in your name. I said, why did you send Marlene this? Why did, why is it, why is it addressed to Marlene? Well, because I wanted to get on there, and Marlene told me that I had to send her the letter, if I wanted to get on there.
Now, we need, okay, we need to have applications for all of the members of our boards and committees if we wanna get certified.
We need to know that.
Oh, absolutely, and that's why you have a copy.
We didn't, well, not, not for three months. It's been somewhere for three months.
We're going to ratify it tonight.
Normally, whoever is the representative of the, of the board, so like, um.
I tried to nominate him.
Ton, you could have nominated at the time.
I did, a couple of months, it's on, it's on, it'll be in the minutes, it should be in the minutes that I recommended Chuck Steyer, and I was told no. I was told by the supervisor that the Parks and Rec Board had to nominate him, but I could not.
I was told by Jennifer that the, that the bylaws called for the Parks and Rec Board to.
And I'm curious, why is there an application?
That's against what we do.
Okay.
That's against what we do, cause it's the same with, uh, the ZBA. Um, we are gonna have somebody on our ZBA board that's going to be resigning, and I asked that person to submit it to the township board.
That's fine.
And, um, and so as the township board, then anyone on this board, especially for the ZBA, can nominate somebody. Just because I'm the representative of the township board, uh, on that, I don't necessarily have to. But, I mean, if Mr. Dockett wants to nominate somebody for that board, he can, um, cause it's not a, an appointed board.
Another question is, why is this application routine? I don't, is that something that was done previously? Always an application has been normal?
Yeah, we can usually ask for people that are interested in the position to send something to the.
Well, it's a resume, more than a.
Yeah, sometimes it was a letter, resume.
It's not really an application.
No, it's a letter of interest.
A letter of interest, and it, and it used to be a lot more informal, and it was an email. And we're attempting to formalize it with an actual application that gives more information, and this is a result of us, um, of me attending, uh, some redevelopment-ready communities.
But the board should be agreeing to that application process.
It puts a wall, though. If somebody has failed an application, then how can I or you recommend somebody?
Yeah, but we should have, we should have had, as a board, decided that we were going to, um,
Yes.
vote on an application process.
I prefer the informal, because we're a small family, community, township type of an environment.
I think there was good intent here.
Yeah.
Just, just note that it was good intent, and.
Yeah, and it's just trying to make it straight across the board. No, of course not. Okay, Ms. Zellinok?
I would, um, recommend we do get a copy of the Park and Rec's bylaws. To see what it says about the appointments, and if it does say, and we've had this discussion.
You see this, you see this, you see what it says, commissions, you see who gets the commissions? The board.
I'd still, I I would still recommend, I would.
Mr. Dockett?
I would recommend we get that, because if it does say, um, what's being discussed tonight, it needs to be changed, and we need to get the bylaws.
It doesn't need to be changed, it was approved on one twenty-three thirteen. Right here it is, we all have a copy of it, don't we?
I think we need the bylaws. I will stick that, we need to see the bylaws, cause it has added a lot of confusion to this discussion, and it needs to be rectified.
This board decides, not the bylaws.
Okay, are we ready to call the question here? Okay, we have a motion by Chocley and a support by Belliger to appoint, um, Chuck Steyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, next item is the non-permanent, uh, park path. Uh, Ms. Belliger, would you like to speak to this item?
Pretty much, uh, what's attached is a picture of the proposed non-permanent path for the new park. It was indicated in orange, which appears as though Jennifer or somebody, uh, did color it in for us. This kinda somewhat mirrors the, uh, some of the plans that have been tossed around by, uh, the, by McKenna, the planner, for what may occur in the future, to some degree or another, of a park slash, uh, community environment, and a possible business and residential. What else can I say here? Um, also taken into consideration, I s- I walked the area with, uh, Dan, Dan Willis of Wastewater, and the little, um, squares in there that say S W, I think, or S A, that's sewer access points. Those little squares that are white and say S A. And he was wanting to see where where this could maybe coincide to, uh, provide them easier access. As it turns out, there's a little thin fence that it looks like M. Dot put up between, uh, these sewer access points and the actual fields and the property, so that was a bit of a curious curiosity we had. There's a quickie fence they put up, like a semi-temporary fence, that wasn't there apparently when Dan was there previously. Um, this is to be done simply on donated, uh, time and materials. There is no plan of any, uh, expenses for this at this point, to be used out of Parks and Rec or anywhere. Uh, simply donated and, uh, you know, efforts and so forth. There's a little pavilion in there that's, it's kinda like, uh, where the planners suspect there may become a pavilion, so I kinda drew that in there. The path would be wood-chipped and or just shortcut grass, kinda a thing, and maintained in that manner. Where it says open field, it's pretty much arbitrary, you can walk wherever you want, there doesn't have to be an outlined path, we don't believe. Just where there's tall weeds and where there's pretty thick brush, we're trying to, the plan is just cut a path around here. Access by foot is what this is referring to. Um, planner making access there at Main Street. And of course, the other access would be near the post office somewhere. And there's, uh, two possible points there on Barker, we plan on cutting out two. And you could cross Barker and then go over across the bridge over to what they call the River Walk. And that could be something they plan on doing in the future, and connect that, and walk all the way back to the Bark Park. That's really not shown on here, you kind of use your imagination, but there, that would be the route. Another thing that can happen in the future is up here near, uh, where it says twenty-three, the freeway. Just below that, you can follow railroad track, and it could be right where that little elbow is, where the first S A is for sewer access. We could go in the future underneath twenty-three to this proposed other walk area, on the other side of the freeway, as a future possibility. So that's part of why that goes, that corner goes right in, that little elbow goes right in there. Talking about this area right in here.
Go under twenty-three, you said?
Yes, under twenty-three, somewhere along or near the, uh.
And the railroad track?
Yeah.
And the creek?
Yep, exactly, all this other junk.
You better buy an airplane.
Yeah, helicopter rides. So that's basically it, um.
That was somebody's dream, wasn't that somebody's dream a long time ago to have that access? I think.
So I don't know what questions it may be, uh, please bring some if you have some. I don't know if I can help you, but I'll try, okay.
Do you know how wide the path will be?
Um, I'm suggesting between four and eight feet. Right now, it's just kind of a hand-done, four-by-eight-feet thing, it depends on the equipment used. Some people are offering to use brushhogs, this, that, and other thing to help, so.
Ms. Zellinok?
Do you know, um, which area you're gonna start first?
Which area I'm gonna start first? Uh, probably the more difficult, which would be the thicker brush area, um, along the railroad track area off of Barker. Probably this way, but it doesn't matter, it could be anywhere, it could just start with a brushhog and work our way around. There is some things that need to be removed, like some downed trees and old logs and things of that nature. There is two other questions, though. Um, one is, there is a large dead tree, half-dead tree up in this area, and if there's a path that comes over here, it's not likely to fall on anybody, but, you know, it is on the property, and sooner or later, that does need to be probably taken care of. It's a real tall, looks like a, um, cottonwood with half of it dead. And the other interest is, we probably should address this, and it's something that, uh, Mr. Dockett brought up earlier. Um, if we're gonna have any kind of parking and whatnot, we probably really need to look into getting the county providing us a, um, a driveway access to make sure that we're starting things off on the right foot, just like the township should follow all the ordinances and rules that we would have any other resident or business follow.
They'll probably, they'll probably do whatever you want for a fee.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, so for, that's something to consider as well.
Who has the brushhog?
There's a few different people that are coming up with, with suggestions and options and volunteering material and time.
Ms. Manly?
Do you have a timeframe?
Um, could begin as soon as, uh, you know, tomorrow, the next day, or whatever. I mean, with people just starting to do things. I got it rough-marked in some areas.
And? Okay, Ms. Otto.
So what is the total length?
I did not measure it.
Okay.
I think if I had to guess, I would say if you follow the loop to its extreme, and even walk along here and then come back around, it's probably gonna be somewhere between half to three-quarter mile, maybe.
Okay.
If I had to guess.
So where they have the pavilion, is that where they're actually gonna have it?
That's roughly where there's talk of having it. That is pavilion, I don't know, this is not.
That's the only reason why I'm asking.
Hopefully not. I'd like the closer to the lake or by the lake.
Yeah, you could see the lake, it'd be nice.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, um, okay, Ms. Otto.
The next thing I, so have you just, so if you're gonna go with cutting the grass shorter, who's gonna maintain it?
That would be a Parks and Rec thing.
Okay. And then the woodchips, if you go with the woodchips.
Parks and Rec is gonna find a way to acquire those. Yes, through all, through donation, anybody can donate woodchips, we'll take them from anybody that's got them. We would just ask them to maybe put them here or there, or whatever, and we can move them.
So I have a thought, just a thought here. Um, Toot Hill Farms, uh, does yard waste.
What farms?
Toot Hill Farm.
Toot Hill Farms, yes.
Has yard waste. And I take my yard waste there every week, I pay for it. Um, is there some way, I'm just thinking outside the box, is there some way we could have an agreement that I could still continue to pay for my yard waste to be there, but they could turn the yard waste into mulch for the township? I would talk to the person. Yeah, you can with what goes on there. It's grass clippings, uh. It's grass clippings, trees, trees, branches, whatever.
So if we're looking at like bark, are you looking for bark probably?
Well, yeah, woodchips I would think would make a good footpath.
Okay, they do have wood there too. They do wood chipping.
But out on North Territorial, we could talk about this offline, but out on North Territorial, DTE dumps, they've got piles over there.
Those are theirs? I want to know.
Yeah, and the road commission will also, when they are clearing trees, they will also-
Oh, you can ask them too.
Yes, because I've got a pile on my property. From, you know, it beats hauling it a lot further away. So there are options.
Of where you can request to have it dumped.
Yeah, okay.
Potentially, but Mr. Mainz, did you have some concerns about this whole?
The only point that I wish to raise, we had this come up in the city of Brighton a couple of years ago when the volunteer activities started to really ramp up up there. We just want to make sure before anybody gets started that it's going to be covered by township insurance. So I was speaking with Mr. Ains, he's going to confirm with the township's carrier, just to make sure. My recollection is when we did this in the city of Brighton, that what the carrier required was just that there was some sort of authorization from the board of the plan and that that was sufficient. The township's carrier is different from the cities, so they may require something different, but it's possible that the action of the board in approving this tonight may be sufficient. We just want to make sure before anybody gets started brushhogging anything that we know that everybody's going to be covered.
Right, and there's, maybe a waiver might be needed?
It's possible. Whatever, our recommendation is whatever the carrier feels is appropriate to make sure that the township is appropriately protected. That would be our recommendation.
Right, and we have not taken, we do not have a building use or facility or land use or any actual policy yet, which is kind of on, one of the things we need to deal with too as a board, so.
Yeah, I would recommend that if we, if you do start on it, start on the easy part first. Only because if, well, that's where I was looking at. I'm being selfish here and because of the pavilion. You know, the Kiwanis would like to, we've been talking about building a pavilion on this property and, you know, donating the funds to build on the property and we're researching it, we're looking at Kiwanis grants. We have grants coming up in November and April that we can apply for. Matching funds and everything to pay for it. So I would suggest that so we could put the pavilion right there and get that up and going right away.
Wherever you, wherever the path will be around the pavilion. Path is subject to change and I would absolutely would need to, it would certainly be around the future as such. And I very much encourage local grants, from community grants and things of that nature.
The grant that I'm talking about is not taxpayer.
That's what I'm talking about. That's, thumbs up for that.
And who's going to manage this project? Are you personally going to manage it or?
Yeah, I could be. I'm on, I'm on that little, me and a couple of other people are on the list of working on this
Thing.
This particular project, so yes.
Okay. Mr. Dockett?
I just want to say again that we shouldn't start projects without having interest and egress to this property. We need to find out. And oh, I'm afraid the road commission's going to say, well, you're so close to the expressway there, we don't want to, but I mean, we really need, I, I, I'm not going to vote for it, but you really need to, you can't, you should not start stuff until you find out how you're going to use this property. If you're talking about building a provision, are you going to park on it? If you're going to park on it, you're going to have to have probably culverts, probably a driveway. It's very important that you, that's the first thing. If I was going to do a piece of property, that's the first thing I'd do.
Do we need to make, do we need to make a motion to get Washtenaw County involved to give us, let us know where we could put this so we can move ahead?
We, we have, we're, there are a lot of rules for building driveways and for, you know, curb cuts.
Right, so I'm asking, I mean, is this something we should do, we should get motion now?
We could get ourselves into a lot of money, you know.
I mean, you don't have to pay it upfront. You could investigate it to get it because
We should investigate.
We had to do it for Shadowwood Farm subdivision. And they came out, he went through, I mean, he did plan, design, everything with me and we never went forward with it. It is a lot of money.
Right.
I'm going to tell you, because there are requirements to build the driveway and put curbs in and all that other stuff, so.
But we did have our engineer take a look at this and egress alongside the post office and a parking lot, and we had delineated it with the phone poles that are out there, so, you know, we, there is some sort of a plan, but that's when the contractor bailed on actually building the road all the way out to the back. But we do have some information from our-
Only get it from the road commission. Washtenaw County Road Commission.
But we're not talking about driveway or anything. We're just talking about a temporary movable path that-
Well, right, but if we're going to be parking cars and have a parking lot, which we are going to delineate with the, with the phone poles back there, so we, you know, there are things going on, you know, behind the scenes.
I mean, it's good to have the research if you want the research.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'd make a motion to give the Park and Recs Board the approval to begin construction of the non-permanent path as as depicted in the board package.
What about liability?
Yeah, whatever the lawyer said.
Yeah, whatever the lawyer said.
Okay, so- What do I need to add in, Mr. Mainz?
Subject to approval of the township's liability carrier.
Thank you. Just that so eloquently said.
Yeah, so beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay, that's why he's the lawyer. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok and support by Chick? Okay.
Roll call.
Not going to restate it. Okay, roll call.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manly?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Belliger?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes. Okay, that passes six to one. Okay, First National Bank Security Agreement. Ms. Zelnok?
Okay, in your package, I had a memo about requesting approval and authorization for the First National Bank Security, so I'll make a motion to authorize the township treasurer to execute the First National Bank Security Agreement contingent upon the date being changed to December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Where's that? Oh.
Right up there.
My support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok and support by Ms. Belliger. Which date is being changed?
Hmm, curious.
Like at the beginning of the security agreement, where it says July first?
Well, yeah.
Who is the best?
We're not doing the, we're not doing the Morgan Stanley thing.
Right, right, that's correct.
Okay.
So. Interesting, because the one that you have should have said expiration date two thousand and thirty, thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Because that was the one that was reviewed by the lawyer.
But this one starts on July first, two thousand and seventeen and ends on December-
Correct, so this isn't the right item that got in there, because what I want to do is, let me, I'll say the authorize the township treasurer to execute the First National Bank Security Agreement as reviewed by the lawyer, which was dated to, up through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And then we will update it for the date. Because I want to make sure, because the lawyer, our lawyers have reviewed the security agreement, but the date on the security agreement was December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. So that was reviewed by the lawyer.
So we need to hold this till the next year?
And this one hasn't been reviewed?
Well, the only thing we want to do is change the date from the December, so if anybody's read it, let me know.
Trustee Otto?
Yeah.
We don't have a track changes between what the treasurer received previously and we reviewed and this updated one with the new date.
Okay.
So the concern that our office raised was who knows what's changed? Maybe nothing's changed, but the date.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure that the one that got approved was the one that we reviewed.
Correct, okay.
So I'm fine with moving forward, just say that based, again, authorize the treasurer to execute the First National Bank Security Agreement as approved by the lawyer. Which was dated December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. That's the one.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok. Do we have a, I'll support that. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manly, yes. Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Belliger?
No.
Okay, five yes and two no. It passes. Okay, okay, thank you. Next one?
The next one again is, the memo indicates I'd like to move to adopt the Morgan Stanley Enabling Resolution, which would be Resolution seventeen-five-seventy-two contained in your board package.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok. I'll support, and support by Ms. Manly. Any more discussion on this one? Ms. Otto?
And all this is, is just switching authorizations of people?
Not, not this motion, this motion, if you look at the Morgan Stanley, and we have been doing business, I believe, with them for about ten years, it's, it's the Enabling Resolution, starting on page two. And it's starting on page three. It's number three.
Okay, thank you.
But it's agenda number five, is that right?
That is correct.
That's correct.
It's on page two, Enabling Resolution, the third.
Yes, correct. Okay. So do we have any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. See, let's see, roll call vote, please.
Belliger?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manly, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Okay, that passes six to one.
I have one more.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township treasurer to execute the Morgan Stanley Authorization Persons Agreement contained in your package. Thank you. And that is the first page, Ms. Otto.
Yeah, I see it.
Is it seventeen-five-seventy-two or, no, it's, is it a different number?
There is no, there is no resolution. That's just an authorization, so.
So we have a motion by Zelnok and support by Ms. Otto? Chick, okay. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Manly, yes. Chockley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Belliger?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Six, one, all right.
So I would, if I may add, I, now that we have the authorization, I'll be checking with Morgan Stanley investing some of the wastewater treatment plant money, the one point million, one million dollars going forward with them. So hopefully that will be done and you'll see that on our financial report for next month.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our next is, is a discussion item, and we have an organization chart that was approved January twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. And Ms. Otto wanted us to discuss this tonight and did you have any-
Yeah, the only thing that I had some concern with is because when we had, when we had the controller, Jennifer discussed with me that in her letter of employment, it showed that the supervisor and the treasurer were she, they, she reported to the treasurer and the supervisor, and I said according to our organizational chart, that was never that it always reported into the township manager. So I wanted to make sure that we had, that everyone on the board had an understanding, and she found the organizational chart, had an understanding of who reports into their township manager. And I noticed that the code enforcement officer wasn't included on that. He also is reporting in as well when we first started, or the ordinance officer when we started with that position. So I would like to, to make a motion to include the ordinance officer as report, on the, on the organizational chart to update it to include the ordinance officer reporting into the township manager.
My support.
Okay. Okay.
A friendly amendment.
Well, wait, okay. Go ahead with your friendly amendment, but then I would like our township manager and our attorney to talk-
It should be changed to community center.
Okay.
Is that all right? Did you hear me?
Seaman's community center instead of senior center.
Oh.
Okay, and I, I believe that Mr. Mainz has something to say, or Mr. Ains has something to say also about this organization chart.
Are you changing it? Are, are we, no, are we?
This is a discussion right now.
Well, I just want to make sure this gets changed.
I got it.
It's changed.
So that's in the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I asked Jennifer to research this because I was trying to clarify who reported to township manager and who reported to various other parties. And initially, she came up with a typical organizational chart from the Township Association. And then that's when we found the one that you had already adopted as a township. What, they've got this provision, administrative staff. And I think it's kind of a catch-all for all the different ones that report to me. And what you've got is job descriptions that say they report to me. So Jennifer had made a list, the front desk clerk, the assistant to the township manager, the assessing assistant, the community center director, the controller, the code enforcement officer, and the wastewater treatment plant people. That all of those report to me based on job descriptions and so forth. So it depends what you want to do. If you want to just consider part of administrative staff, that's all right with me, or if you want to modify it.
That's what we do. What was your thought?
I would like to spell out who the administrative staff is personally.
That's okay.
So I mean, so I'd like that either as a memo on it or something. Yeah.
Jen, will you talk into the mic, please? I can't hear you.
But yeah, but who is that? I mean, it's good for the public to know too.
So, Leonard, you're asking that the titles of the administrative staff be included onto the chart?
Right. I mean, it could be just like a dotted, you know, like a, you know, because I think it's good, I mean, we may know, but I don't know if everybody in the, the public knows who the administrative staff is. And I do have one question, though, too, on that regards, is the assessing assistant.
Should go to the assessor.
I would think it would.
I would think so.
And I mean, yeah, I mean, Mary Bird is split, but any assessing, I mean, technically, it's under the supervisor from the statute.
Right. But I, I also had a discussion this afternoon with Mr. Mainz and Mr. Burns, and they were looking at this and going, well, the superdeviser doesn't report to the township board. The supervisor and the clerk and the trustees and the treasurer report to the electorate, really. So here, but here they are under the township board, and so it wasn't quite an appropriate chart, so Mr. Mainz, would you like to talk about this?
Just, just, just very briefly. As one threshold matter, we're not on the chart, which probably we should be. We report to the board.
It shows the same thing.
Statutorily. Yeah. So I, I think that there's nothing necessarily wrong with the chart as it is, so long as nobody thinks of it as being sort of a traditional corporate organization chart where the supervisor, because they're under the board, reports to the board. The clerk, because they're under the board, reports to the board. As long as nobody thinks about it in that context, it's probably okay. Because also, to the, to the commission's point, the commissions are shown under the township board, which that's correct in terms of appointment, but the boards are independent once they're appointed. So it, it's not really an organizational chart in the way that you would think of as a corporate- So i- it's not really an organizational chart in the way that you would think of as a corporate organizational chart, where people who are under answer to the person above them. In some instances, that's true, in some instances on this chart, that's, that's not accurate. So you could either leave it as is without understanding, or if you wanted to find a way to modify it to reflect those relationships, that's fine also.
I think.
We've done it exactly the way the MTA did it.
But I think when it's, when it shows, I'm sorry, everybody can't see this, it shows basically the same thing with, uh, the, uh,
The same thing up here.
Yeah, underneath, but they have dotted lines to these, uh, positions, Supervisor, Clerk, Treasurer, and Trustees, which indicates that they're on the Township Board, that does not mean that they report to the Township Board, is that right?
Then, and that's, that's my point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, saying who the Board is.
Yeah, so maybe we should do that, then, do the dotted line.
Dotted line.
Yeah. Our office would be a direct line to the, a, a, a non-dotted line to the Township Board, obviously, we're a direct report, just as the Township Manager is. Um, but I, I would think that would be appropriate, an appropriate way to reflect that on the chart.
Okay. So we can update this.
So I'll, I'll, uh, remove my, uh, motion.
Okay.
Uh, to have it updated, and then request to have it on the, a Board, uh, Board meeting agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Do I have to remove my friendly?
And what, what do you want to have on there, oh, oh, we'll put it in the Community Center.
I just wanted, I just made the friendly.
We'll update it.
Yeah, yeah, well, so we'll update it, that's, it was a good discussion.
Well, I mean, do I have to, do I have to retract that?
No.
No, okay.
Okay.
No, so i- it's good discussion, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I will mention too, I know, um, we had the C- Controller reporting to the Township Manager, but when we did interview Yvette, Ms. Patrick, we told her that once the Township Manager was going to be in place, that that's who she would report to.
Okay. Okay. So that's all of our discussion, uh, thank you. Um, now we have an opportunity for a second call to the public, do we have anyone who would like to speak at this time?
Is this gonna be on here, is this on there?
No, that was the gentleman. The gentleman passed this out, so you can take it home and read it, okay. So, second call to the public, feel free to come forward, state your name and your address, make sure the, um, microphone's turned on, and you have, uh, three minutes, you can share, uh, your thoughts with us.
Hello, um, yes, Brandt Johnson, Oakham, Michigan.
Hold it right up to your mouth, sir.
Uh, Brandt Johnson, Oakham, Michigan, I just wanted to apologize to all you all, and I'll, I'll send out a correct copy of the, um, the typographical errors on here, the statistics are right on the statistics page, except for the top, it says Meridian Township, and underneath there it says Ingham County, where it should be Northfield Township and Washtenaw County. I apologize, those errors don't happen with me, and I'm embarrassed, but I wanted to tell you, I truly apologize, and I'll get you a corrected copy, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Brian Azar, seven eight nine nine, Dixboro Road. I'm a client of Mr. Johnson's, and I own property in Northfield Township. Uh, I, uh, lived here my whole life, uh, in the area, graduated from South Lion High School. And, um, I've always ran professional businesses, I would like to build a professional, a professional medical marijuana facility in Northfield Township, licensed by the state, of course. Um, it would benefit Northfield Township with, uh, new jobs and taxes. Um, the myth about, uh, increasing crime and decreasing property value is not true. What I've researched in other states, that it actually increases property value and decreases crime. And, um, I would like to ask the Board to, uh, put this medical marijuana ordinance on agenda item.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
Azar, A-Z-A-R.
A-Z-A-R, okay. And Brian, B-R-I-A-N?
Y.
B-Y-R-I-A-N, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you for coming forward, um, we'll, we'll be discussing our priorities in the near future. Thank you. Kamana, thank you.
Uh, Jerry Herman, eighty-three sixty-five, Earhart Road, and, uh, let's see if I can read this here. So I'm gonna speak about the medical marijuana discussion there. I don't like the, the message that medical marijuana sends to the children of our township. Uh, smoking weed is not healthy. Marijuana impairs short-term memory and judgment, and distorts, distorts perception. It can impair performance in school or at work, and make dangerous, uh, make it dangerous to drive. It also affects brain systems that are still maturing through young adulthood. Marijuana is still illegal under federal law, regardless of the medical need. Thus, even if the state does not arrest, prosecute, or convict individuals, the federal system still has the authority to do so. And, and this part, I think, is the most important for me, at least. Marijuana's social cost will negate any tax revenue increase. The degradation of family and community re- relations has major economic costs. If marijuana disrupts families and community, even marginally, the government becomes obligated to support those social networks and communities, and have weakened due to marijuana, marijuana use, resulting in bigger government and less liberty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, Board Member comments, do we have any, uh, any Board Members who would like to mention anything tonight? Ms. Bellinger?
She's afraid, she's afraid.
No, she didn't hold her hand up quick enough.
Let's see, I wanna say that, um, it was mentioned earlier about, uh, prayers for Texas. That was a, uh, something for us to, uh, you know, our fellow Americans there suffering and so forth. But such is the weather, such is life. Shop local, buy local, I took that one from Wayne, it's a great idea. I wanna remind everybody that Washtenaw County does have the highest property taxes in the state of Michigan, have to say that, just to remind people, that's costly. Oh, and regarding that one mill, um, for the, uh, tax increase for November, Commissioner Ping, I haven't heard back from her. She was gonna have the Attorney General look into the language for that, cause there was some questions as to legality, but I have not yet heard on that. And, uh, um, donations for the Community Center, Bark Park, Community Garden, whatever, please help if you like to donate to, uh, what, uh, what you like in the community. You can stop by, the Treasurer has information with, regarding that, you can stop in and leave a check or cash for us to say, hey, this is for the Bark Park, I wanna help out. So, I encourage people in our community to do so, we have a very good community and, uh, strong community, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you so much, and Happy Labor Day.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Docket?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to say that, uh, medical marijuana is, is legal in Michigan as aspirin. So I am all for medical marijuana. And, uh, have a Happy Labor Day, and use local businesses and services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have anything, Ms. Zelnok?
Just, um, enjoy your Labor Day, and thank you for all the laborers.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Manley?
Just a quick note, probably should talk about the beginning, but I gave you all a letter at the beginning, um, not to beat a dead horse, but Mr. Docket signed on two two sixteen, and he's going to receive a pay card. So, just wanted to put that out there.
That was before I found out that it was worthless at the bank.
Okay, well, I'm just putting it out there as enough.
It was worthless at the bank, it was gonna cost me money to cash it. So. I signed it, but I didn't know what I was signing.
Yeah. Okay, I'm Ms. Otto.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that there is, um, a business in town that she opened up, uh, she did wholesale, um, but she is opening up a retail shop on a, one time a month on a weekend basis. It's down, uh, the ways from the, um, the yarn shop, it's like right next door.
What kind?
Um, she has a lot of home decorative items, beautiful stuff. Um, I, I found it on Facebook, and I went and visited her last weekend, very nice things. Uh, she's also, um, a professional photographer, she did my son's, uh, graduation pictures over ten years ago. And I just, if she opens up again, please go and see her, she has wonderful shop. Um, and also, I wish everybody happy, Happy Labor Day weekend. What's the name? I don't know the name of the shop, I'm sorry. It's, her name is Catherine, yeah, it's the one with the, the rail in front.
By the video shop.
By the...
Film the video?
No, the other way. The other side.
Yeah.
By the yarn shop, where the yarn shop was.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Ms. Chick?
Uh, two things, um, speaking of taxes, Washtenaw County does have one of the highest taxes in the, excuse me, country. Um, uh, but where's Northfield, and weren't we going to get some kind of a graph showing?
We are... Oh, yes, we have been, if I may answer Ms. Otto, or Ms. Chick's question, yes, the office has been working on putting, um, detailed, as well as charts, and the details of all the millages, and we will share that at our next Board meeting when we come to authorize the millage, or the Township, um, taxes, be collected into separate.
Okay, so the Township is in good, in a, a good place, county, we can't do a whole lot about, but...
Yeah, you'll find, as you said, you know, over all the taxes, it's about two percent goes to the Township, about,
Schools.
Out of, yeah, schools get about twenty-five percent, depending on which school district you are. Wash, you know, the, um, Washtenaw County, um, College and ISD get quite a bit. And, I mean, our police and fire, they get about fifteen percent, so. But we will have that available for our next meeting, we've been footing and ticking, and tying out numbers, and doing graphs, and all good stuff, so. It'll, it'll be available.
Are you gonna do it in color?
Um, we don't have a color printer, but we have a color screen. I, I mean, we could even do a brief presentation if you'd like, just to show it.
That would be great, I bet you the public would like to hear it.
Okay, then we shall put that on.
And the other, a question I had was, when we were having our discussion about the temporary, uh, path in the park, you had said there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, is there anything you can share?
Oh, what, about the park?
You just said there was a lot going on behind the scenes.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot going on, we, you know, um, as far as with planning, and with the downtown planning group, and, um, you know, just attempting to, you know, kind of delineate a parking area out in the back of the post office, where it had been set aside before, so there's a lot of people kind of trying to do things to improve that area, uh, so there's that. On the other, on the other hand, you know, there's, you know, the Planning Commission, actually, which, actually, you were there, um, is, has approved a work plan, or is recommending a work plan to the Board of Trustees, and that will come, um, at a relatively soon, actually, uh, we're scheduling that for September twelfth. So, um, so there's, there's some exciting things going on out there, um, we had a meeting with, um, someone who is looking at an apartment complex.
So, so, there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of planning, it's, are we any closer to actually making a decision on what we want that park to look, or that area to look like?
Oh, the park to look?
The area, yeah.
Well, that's, uh, we had the synthesis plan that was presented. That will be a little later, I believe, in September, maybe October.
I've heard September, October, but I wondered if, if that was gonna hold true.
Well, the, the nor, the downtown strategic plan will be completed, um, to be presented to the DDA on September twenty-fifth. So then, then there will be a document, right now it's a draft, and we're going through it, so we'll have that plan, and we'll have the North Village Plan, and at that point, we need to, to actually make some progress on these things, and so.
Right.
Well, it has to come to the Board.
It has to come to the Board.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, and that's gonna be in October. And, uh, we're hoping to have a draft RFP, or RFQ, available, too. So, you know, that's, um, you know, Mr. Ains and I have been working with, um, the planner, and, you know, we're getting that all lined up, and so.
Okay, cool.
I'm, I'm very excited about what could happen for this community.
I am too, that's why I'm anxious to see something, it's like...
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You mentioned something about an apartment complex?
Um, yes, we have some interest, uh, potentially, in a couple parcels, um, they're just exploring at this point to see, um, what, um, if, if there is any interest.
Could be condos, any chance it could be condos, property ownership instead of rental?
There's always, there's always that chance, but...
I prefer that we stick with property ownership, have skin in the game.
Well, we, we can't tell people, I mean, when it's zoned properly, we can't tell them they can't do what it's zoned. But, um, um, it, you know, so we're, we're, we're looking at it, it should be a high-quality development, however, um, when it goes.
We should have some say, if it's higher density, we could certainly drive for condos, or ownership is, uh, the, uh, the key.
Okay, well, uh, anyway, I won't get into the, we should have lunch. Anyway, um, okay, that's all my comments, everyone have a great, uh, Labor Day weekend, and stay safe, and, uh, keep Houston in your, uh, prayers, my son's down there in Houston, so. Uh, move to a turn.
So, I support.
Okay. Chockley and Chick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you much.
You gonna be around tomorrow? Oh, you are, okay. Um, I, cause if you're gonna be around, maybe I'll be around. Haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, I think what we do is just, you know, put a key on the side that says, you know, dotted, it states membership in. So we would be a solid line, because we do, of course, do a lot of, and then, the, the Commission's, you know.
Thank you.
We would be, we would be a solid line, because they're appointed by, so my thinking was exactly that.